Call to order, the September 9th, Newport Beach Planning Commission to order. And we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Klein will lead us into the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, could we stand for a moment of silence for 9/11? It's 20 years on Saturday.
Thank you.
All right. And we'll move to item three for our roll call.
All Commissioners present this evening with the exception of Commissioner Klostermeyer, who is absent this evening, and Chair Wag- excuse me.
Chair Waggon, I see him outside.
Commissioner Waggon.
Oh yeah, sorry, Chair, Commissioner Waggon, yeah, he's making his way in, all right. We'll note that on the minute. Now we'll move on to Agenda Item Four, which is public comments. Now's the time that we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, not on our agenda tonight, and which are generally in the purview of the Planning Commission. If you'd like to speak, please come forward and state your name and look forward to your comments.
What up, Council? My name is JT Parr. Yesterday, I did mushrooms with my buddy Chad. And during the trip, I accessed new levels of communication, not just with people, but also with the trees. I communicated with the trees, and they let me know that they are in grave danger. In a place called the Amazon, which is a big rainforest, trees are being cut down and burnt, and it's super bad for the environment. I can't just sit back and eat pokee. Something needs to be done. That is why I am going to shave a line down the middle of my head, and my friend Chad's going to do it as well, so we can raise awareness to this horrible atrocity. I invite you, Council, to do the same thing. It's time to take a stand and to make a difference. Thank you.
Are there any public comments?
Yeah, what up, Council? My name is Chad Kroger. This is the first I'm hearing about the head shaving thing. I also did mushrooms and spoke with the trees, but they kind of just told me to plant more avocado trees, so maybe we just do that instead. I, yeah, I just, I think shaving a line down the middle of my dome seems pretty aggro. Plus, I don't think the trees want us to look like re-nobs. Re-nob is boner backwards. Sorry, dog, I just, yeah, but Council, what up? I think that, we think you guys should plant more avocado trees. They're amazing. And they don't provide any shade, which is great for tanning. Plus, you guys know that avocados make guac? Yeah, and they're also $3 apiece at Gelson's. So, folks, this is as close to a money tree as we're going to get. But I know what you guys are thinking. How the hell do we do it? Well, this is the crazy part. All you gotta do is put a seed in the ground and add water. That's it. So, yeah, not to be braggy, but that's a slam dunk. So, are you guys cool with that one? Are you guys down with the avocado trees instead?
That, are you fine? Are you?
Yeah, just, do you have a preference for the head shave or avocado trees?
Comments, not response from the Planning Commission on.
All right, chill. Okay, late.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Public comments that are not specifically on the agenda? Seeing none. I'm actually going to give one quick comment and wish our fellow Commissioner, Peter Kettin, happy birthday. It's his birthday today, and he is here in this meeting, so happy birthday, Commissioner Kettin.
No, I'm not shaving the beard off.
You're, okay, well, oh, wow. Maybe next year, so. All right, we'll move on to item number five, requests for continuances. Are there any continuances, request for our, looks like there's none. We'll move on to item six, which is going to be our consent items, which we only have one item tonight, which are the minutes from August 19th. So, if Commissioners have any questions to staff or anything additions to the minutes, please review, and then we'll look for an approval.
I'll make a motion. Mr. Mosher had sent some edits that I'll add into that.
I'll second. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and move into Agenda Item, was it seven, our public hearing items tonight. And we'll go first to item number two, which is the Hoag Development Agreement 10-Year Expansion, PA 2021-184. And we'll just move over to staff. Patrick, for your, you're up first for the presentation.
Chair, real quick, I'm going to recuse myself from this item due to conflict of interest with involvement with the organization.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Elmore. All right, Patrick?
Good evening, Commissioners. Patrick Akis with the Planning Division. I'll deliver a very brief report on.
We could just hold on, please.
I'll deliver a very brief report on the extension request to the Hoag Development Agreement. The original development agreement was negotiated between the city and Hoag in 1994. The development agreement granted vested rights to develop the hospital campus, consistent with extensive regulations and mitigation measures. Since 1994, there have been four approved amendments. The first was in 2018 that allowed flexibility in the location of Hoag-related uses. Amendments two through four are time-related, most recently being the one-year extension due to COVID-19 that the Commission saw last year. The current request is the Fifth Amendment that would extend the development agreement term an additional 10 years until September 15th in exchange for specific public benefits. So, due to the dynamic nature of healthcare and rapidly changing technologies, Hoag needs more time to exercise the vested rights of the development agreement. And in exchange, Hoag will provide a public benefit, namely $3 million, over the next 10 years to provide support and resources for those experiencing homelessness in the city. This is in addition to the $3 million that was provided to Hoag in the Amendment Three that also extended the term 10 years. Also, the current amendment proposed has a milestone requirement. In the year 2030, Hoag would be required to submit a conceptual plan to the City Council for review and consideration. And this is just a check-in to ensure that there is progress on executing the development rights. There are no changes to the development limits or potentials of the agreement. It's only the time that will be extended and that milestone requirement. Consequently, staff does recommend that you find all environmental concerns have been previously addressed in the certified EIR for the project, and that you adopt the resolution recommending the City Council approve adoption of the term extension. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And Sandy Smith, Vice President of Real Estate and Facilities, is here and available for questions as well.
Any question? And presentation from them, okay. Is there any questions with, for staff before we move on to public comments? Seeing none. Then let's go ahead and move to ex parte communications. If anyone have any, we'll start there with, on the left.
None.
None.
None for me.
None for me. And I have not either.
All right. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing, and if you wanted to give any, from the applicants, one of you, feel free.
Thank you very much for letting me be here this evening. I just wanted to say that, you know, Hoag has been a partner of the City of Newport Beach since 1952, when the population of the city was about 9,000 people. You know, we've grown as the city has grown and tried to respond with our clinical programs to meet the needs of the community. We have just been named the top hospital in Orange County again for the fifth straight year. We're one of the top 10 hospitals in California, one of the top 50 hospitals in the country, which is pretty unusual for a community hospital. The development agreement and our relationship, our ability to respond and grow over time is one of the, one of the secret weapons that we have that allow us to be nimble and meet the ever-changing needs of healthcare. And so, we appreciate your consideration of this extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments to this item? Other comments? Did you have a question for the applicant?
Just curious, on your master plan, is there anything in the pipeline for employee housing on the property?
We do not currently have any plans for employee housing.
Is it something that they're considering from time to time, or?
I think the challenge with employee housing, and as we have looked at, at housing in particular, is that it's difficult to create enough, to serve enough of the population where we're not our employee population, where it doesn't disadvantage some and others. Remember, we run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, three shifts, and we have, you know, quite a significant employee population, over 7,000 employees right now. So, I think what we have seen when we have tried to do targeted programs is it disproportionately benefits some and then creates a distortion for others, which makes it a very difficult employee benefit for us.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. And I'll take it back to the public. Are there any other additional public comments on this item? All right, seeing that there are no more public comments, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section here, and we'll bring it up to the Commission for additional questions and staff for discussion amongst yourselves. Commissioner Kettin?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I assume we're doing a 10-year extension on item PA 2021-184, Development Agreement Number DA 2021-001. Staff, I think that's what we're doing. Making a recommendation?
That's correct. You'd be recommending approval of the extension to the City Council.
Very good.
My motion.
I'll second that. Hoag is a great partner with our community and more than happy to do this.
Commissioner Kettin? The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. We'll have Curtis come back in, and we'll start now with item number three on public, on public hearing items. This is the BSP Bristol LLC Medical Offices, PA 2020-052. And I believe David is going to walk us through.
Thank you, Chair Lowry, and thank you to the Commission for being here tonight. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division, and I'm presenting the BSP Bristol Medical Condos at 1400 and 1420 Bristol Street North. Just a quick note, the photo that you're looking at is a rendering and of the future vision of the entire project, and the applicant will have a presentation after me to kind of go through the before and after renderings and photos. So, this is a project that was reviewed by the Planning Commission on June 3rd. The request is for a conversion of a professional office, existing professional office use converted to a medical office use. This requires a conditional use permit to reduce the parking. The applicant is also requesting condominiums for each suite, so that request requires condominium conversion and tentative parcel map. Additionally, the project exceeds 300 average daily trips, so a traffic study is required. Since the last hearing, the applicant has proposed parking lifts to add the parking supply to the existing parking lot, and that requires a modification permit tonight. Here's the project site, located on the corner of Bristol Street North and Spruce Street. The project is designated by the general plan as General Commercial Office and zoned as PC 11 Newport Place, specifically Industrial Site 3A. The site is approximately 100,000 square feet, and the existing offices, as you can see in yellow, total 37,515 square feet. This site is located in an area that's heavily used with office. As you can see, the green buildings are all office uses in the vicinity. Here is a site plan of the original development. Again, the buildings are in yellow, and this was developed in 1978. And at that time, as you can see, the blue boxes, it was developed with compact parking spaces. During staff's review, staff recognized a few deficiencies in the parking lot, and one of them is the compact parking, which would not be, it's not compliant with today's code. Secondly, all the drive aisles that are located within the parking lot are deficient in width, so it makes for hard maneuverability around the parking lot for vehicles. As part of the project to convert to medical offices, the applicant has proposed to fix these deficiencies in the parking lot. First, by widening all the drive aisles, as you can see the blue bubbles there, they're going to widen all the drive aisles to become code compliant. In the red box, you can see that the compact parking is being replaced with angled parking, which is code compliant now. Purple is the handicap ADA spaces, which have been conceptually reviewed by building division for the number of spaces and location. And finally, the blue on the upper-left corner represents the proposal and location for the parking lifts, which is a 17 additional space lift. So, two rows of 17 would create 34 total spaces. Here's a rendering of the parking lift as proposed. And as you can see, it's a double-row lift, 17 spaces wide. You can see that it's built with a roof and two side walls, as well as a balance to screen the second row vehicles. Staff has recognized an additional opportunity to further screen those vehicles to bring the balance to the bottom of the vehicle on the second level, and that is to the discretion of the Planning Commission if they wish to do that. The condition of approval that does condition the screening is flexible as it requires it to be screened to the satisfaction of the Community Development Director. Here's the back view of the parking lifts. There's a green wall screen, and again, you can see the roof and the side walls. I wanted to include some photographs of other parking lift projects in the area. This is one on Newport Boulevard, specifically 441 Newport Boulevard. It was approved by the Planning Commission in 2014. As you can see, there is a second-story parking lift that is fully screened from street view. Here's an example of one in Venice Beach, and this is an example of one that's not screened and what that would look like. It's just open to the air, with no roof and no balance on the second level. And finally, this is a project in Culver City that is similar to the proposed project with the screening on the second level as well. So, with the proposed parking lifts, the existing used professional office is now compliant with parking. There's no more deficit. However, the project before us today is a conversion to the medical office use, which requires additional parking. It goes from 167 required to now 188. And with 167 spaces provided with the lifts, it creates now a deficiency of 21 spaces, and that is the request tonight for the conditional use permit for the Planning Commission to waive the 21-space requirement. And with that request, the applicant has provided a parking study, which shows weekday parking surveys. They were taken pre-COVID-19. They, the parking study discusses five comparable Orange County medical office buildings, and it specifically zeroes in on three office buildings without the urgent care use, because the proposed project is, as conditioned, will not have urgent care. And with all the data and with the surveys done, the study concludes that the appropriate rate is 3.87 spaces per 1,000 square feet for the medical office uses. And just for comparison's sake, the ITE release rates in 2019 came out to 3.9 spaces per 1,000 square feet for medical and dental offices. So, compared to the parking study, it's in line with the 3.87 per thousand. With that rate applied, the demand is 145 spaces during peak times, which comes out to 87% of the provided parking at 167 spaces. Staff understands that the 87% parking occupancy is on the higher range. The applicant has proposed to do a phased approach, which is to check in at 70%. Once 70% of the office space has been converted to medical, at that point, they would halt further tenant improvements for medical and submit a parking study for staff to verify that the parking study and the data that was provided would hold true. And in, at that point, if it does hold true and there is enough parking, the goal is to have 100% medical, medical office. Staff's comfortable with the 70/30 split, because at that, at that point, with the 70/30 split, there is going to be sufficient parking still on site, and there's still going to be a functioning parking lot in case that, in the case that we can't continue with the conversions to medical. As I mentioned earlier, a traffic study was required, because the project generated 1,306 average daily trips. The study analyzed 13 intersections for potential impacts and concluded that the intersections will continue to operate at a satisfactory level and that there are no improvements Staff has made all the required findings in the attached resolution in the staff report. The medical office is compatible with the surrounding uses, which are all office uses. The buildings are physically suited for medical condos. Building inspectors have inspected the building, and they've identified minor accessibility upgrades that are required. And finally, parking and traffic, as previously discussed, with the studies that have been provided, show to be adequate. Therefore, staff recommends to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and also adopt the resolution to approve the project. My name is David Lee, and applicant is here today. He has a presentation on hand. Matt Haugen and Phil Greer, and the traffic consultant, Candini Traffic, is also here as well. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the Commission with staff before we move on to the applicant's presentation? Don't see any. We got Peter.
Staff, he didn't bring up the waiver of Title 19, separate water and sewer. I see Public Works wants that. Planning staff was recommending something different. Whether it's going to be sub-metered, or how's it going to work?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kettin. Pull that one second here. Yes, the waiver of individual utility connections, they were reviewed by our utility department, and that is to waive each individual unit from having a separate water and sewer connection. Instead, the entire building will have one, and I believe the CCNRs will split that up for the billing purposes.
Okay, is this common?
Yes, Commissioner Kettin, in previous projects that have done these condominium conversions for commercial, they have included these waivers as well for the utilities.
Okay. Ask one follow-up question to that. So, the bill would be in the name of, say, the association or the owners' association, and that's where we bill, and however, that's determined split between the individual condo, condominium owners, that's whatever, but the bill itself goes to the association, at least in past projects, and that's how the bills are, who the payee, I guess, is.
Yes, thanks, Chair Lowry. The owner, in the previous hearing, did speak to that and indicated that would be the case, but once he makes a presentation, I believe he can even further explain that situation.
Sounds good. Commissioner Kettin, I just had that.
Yeah. I read and reread the idea about having a 70/30 split at the start. How are you going to monitor that, Steph?
Commissioner Kettin, if I might ask that, answer that one, we would monitor that through the plan check process. So, they're going to need to do a building permit to, you know, to do the interior improvements, the tenant improvements for these uses, and so the use would be understood at that point in time, and we would monitor it through that process at the plan check stage.
Has that worked at other projects like this?
We don't customarily do this kind of a condition, but I don't see any issue with the administration of ensuring that it would go that way.
On 441 Old Newport, did they have that same condition?
I don't believe they did.
Okay. So, they have enough there, they didn't have enough parking, but you had to. They came up with a stacked thing, correct?
Yes, that project is fairly similar to this, with the exception that there was no condominium conversion in that project site. It was just a conversion of use to medical from office, so in that respect, it's a fairly similar application to this.
All right. Can you, or should I wait for the applicant to describe how this mechanism is going to work with this? Number one. Number two, and they also are providing a valet parking service out there. I couldn't figure out where on the site plan that would be. And then I have questions about the landscape plan compared to what's out there today, though.
Yes, Commissioner Kettin, the applicant would be best to speak on that, all the details on the parking management plan, and I believe he also has the landscaping in his presentation as well.
All right. I have others, but I'll hold. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commissioners and staff at this point? Seeing none, let's move to ex parte communications. We'll start all the way down with Commissioner Rosey.
I had a conversation with the applicant and with an adjacent landowner.
I had a conversation with applicant's consultant and some correspondence with staff.
Brief conversation with the applicant's consultant, and I visited 441 Old Newport and spoke to one of the tenants in that building.
None for me.
I had a conversation with the applicant's consultant.
I too spoke with the applicant's consultant about the merits of the project, and I met with, or actually talked on the phone with the owner at 1401 Quail and discussed his opposition.
Thank you, Commissioners, and we'll go ahead and move to public comments, and we'll start with the applicant's presentation, if you'd like to come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Philip Greer. I'm the consultant on this project. I'd like to introduce Matt Haugen, VP for Buchanan Street Properties, who's got a short presentation for you all.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the time. As Phil mentioned, I'm Matt Haugen. I head up the Commercial Real Estate Division for Buchanan Street Partners, who is the owner-applicant for this project. Buchanan Street Partners is an office, and our headquarters are here in Newport Beach, so this project sits across the 73 from our office building. Before I kind of get into the presentation, I'd like to say thanks to David for all of his hard work. It's been a long road over the past year of just working back and forth and trying to come up with solutions, and I appreciate everybody else on staff participating in this. So, before we get into the enhancements, I thought I'd take some time just to explain, you know, why we purchased this building and what was interesting about, and we thought, why we thought this would be a good investment. We were prior owners of a project that we were banded called The Jetty. It's along Irvine Avenue, Newport Beach, as you're heading towards the coast, and that project was also a.
My name is Philip Greer. I'm the consultant on this project. I'd like to introduce Matt Haugen, VP for Buchanan Street Properties, who's got a short presentation for you all.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the time. As Phil mentioned, I'm Matt Haugen. I head up the Commercial Real Estate Division for Buchanan Street Partners, who is the owner-applicant for this project. Buchanan Street Partners is an office, and our headquarters are here in Newport Beach, so this project sits across the 73 from our office building. Before I kind of get into the presentation, I'd like to say thanks to David for all of his hard work. It's been a long road over the past year of just working back and forth and trying to come up with solutions, so I, and I appreciate everybody else on staff participating in this. So before we get into the enhancements, I thought I'd take some time just to explain, you know, why, why we purchased this building and what was interesting about, and we thought, why we thought this would be a good investment. We were prior owners of a project that we were banded called The Jetty. It's along Irvine Avenue in Newport Beach, as you're heading towards the coast. And that project was also a condominium office conversion. And so as we started to sell off those individual units, towards the later end of that, we started to notice a substantial amount of interest also from medical office professionals in the Newport Beach area. And so in discussing that with those, with those various doctors, with brokers that represent those doctors, when this property came available, we thought, wow, this is a great location with its identity, its frontage on Bristol, the where it sits to be a kind of in the middle of the bay, to be able to pull from Newport Beach on one, on each side of the bay, its access to the 73 to pull for patients from the north and south. And really, there is a lack of opportunity for medical professionals to be able to own their space. Being in the real estate industry, you know, we, we love owning medical office buildings for lease because we like to say medical tenants are sticky tenants. It's hard, they don't, they don't leave very often, and so it's, they're nice tenants. But for tenants that, and specifically medical, you know, practices that are well-established, they don't necessarily need to be in Newport Center or around Hoag. They have a following that goes with them, and not too dissimilar from, you know, whether somebody makes a determination to, do I own a house or do I, do I rent? Well, from a real estate perspective, if you've kind of established either your business or your family life and you plan to kind of take up roots, you know, what a great opportunity in Newport Beach to be able to develop, you know, equity appreciation in a great city like Newport Beach, which is, you know, real estate is invaluable. And so for us, when we looked at this site, we, we just, we felt that it was just well-located. This project was originally developed, as David mentioned, in the late 70s. Amazingly enough, the same owners owned this for 40 years, so this project has not seen any improvements in 40 years. And so as you're going to see as we walk through some of these, we felt like this was going to be a great opportunity to also create a, enhance the image of Bristol Street with this, with this frontage. So as you're looking at here, this is a picture of, if you're going north on Bristol Street at the hard corner of Spruce and Bristol, this is the 1400 building. If we can go to the next slide. Perfect, thank you. So this is an image of enhancements and renovations that we are looking to do for this site. What you'll notice here is, is the siding, some new paint on the siding, and a Lucabond product that, which is the white, which is, gives it a little more definition. Right now, it's a very flat structure. The Lucabond product just gives it a little more design. And then a full re-enhancement of the landscaping, new trees to be planted at front Spruce, as well as on Bristol as well. Go to the next slide. This is an image of the interior courtyard of the 1400 building as it sits today. Next image, please. This is our plans for the enhancement of the, of this, to really open it up, provide for seating. You can go to the next slide. This is an image from the second level, looking down. As you can see, our plans are to add shade structures, as well as replace the stairwells, and just make this a much more friendly building. This is an image of the existing 1400 building, as you're looking from Bristol. Go to the next image, please. This is just another, similar rendering of our plans for the building, additional tenants signage. 1420 Bristol, that is the interior courtyard. Go more over. This is very similar, you know, new seating areas, new drought tolerant landscaping, new trees, and a similar facade. So we can stop right there. And so, you know, what we really looked at is, we thought this would be a great idea to just, this, this building, over 40 years, just needs a refresh, and so we think the community really benefit from the upgrades that this, that could undergo in these buildings. You know, we also looked at, you know, the parking is the biggest concern here. We're, we're site constrained, and obviously that's, you know, why we're here, and I think everybody understands that. And so the history was kind of given by David, so I don't want to elaborate too much on that, on how the parking was originally scheduled with 167 when it was originally developed, but that included 44 compact spaces. So in order to comply with, you know, to the best abilities, given the restriction within the land site, you know, we're now restricted down to 150 parking spaces, but also includes the necessary six ADA stalls. When we came before the planning commissioners in June, obviously we presented this as just that 150 parking spaces with a deficiency of 38 spaces. The parking study that was done by RK Engineering, provided there would be a surplus, but only a handful, and so, you know, at the discretion of the planning commissioners, it was, you know, please go back to the drawing board and let's try to figure out how we can, you know, add some more parking and reduce this deficiency. So working with the city, we looked at the adjacent properties within the neighborhood that maybe we could try to find additional parking that we could utilize. Unfortunately, all the parking per their code, there was no excess parking of those sites. We also checked the Fletcher Jones site. They as well didn't have any additional parking that they could provide to us. We looked at, you know, what would a parking structure look like with that? And as you would expect, the cost was, you know, extremely prohibitive, and the mass of what that structure might even look like, probably just from a site standpoint, would be probably less appealing. And so we were hired, we hired an architect called Varesco Design, who happened to be involved on that old Newport Boulevard project that had the lift systems. And so in engaging with them, we talked about, you know, this issue we're having, and so I had a conversation with the manufacturer, Park Plus, who does these lifts, and tried to understand just, you know, how, how are these being utilized? How popular, popular are these? And for obvious reasons, they've become very popular in, in urban cities, LA, Los Angeles. They're starting to become more popular in San Diego, and for the obvious reasons is, you know, we have, you know, Newport Beach real estate is, you know, expensive land, and it's very difficult to buy buildings and just scrape what's there and build something different. And so how do you find ways to adaptively reuse buildings as they are today and change them into something that benefits the community and drive some, where there's more demand? And so we evaluated these lifts, and so you can go to the next slide. So as identified up here, that David mentioned, where you see and highlighted in red there is where we've located these 17 parking lifts. This is in the northwest corner, you know, a further distance from Bristol, also a decent distance for Spruce, trying to, you know, maintain, you know, the structures away from the public right of ways. And if you go, you can go to the next picture, the image of the lift system, which you saw, the next one. I think one of the commissioners mentioned where would the valet be. Across right here, you'll see a valet right there, right in front there. That's the station, as well as what would take place is there designated six pickup and drop-off areas down that aisle. So what we really direct is that all of the, these stalls would only be utilized by the medical professionals or their staff. So as they, as they came onto the project, whether, you know, through lease, but likely through a purchase, the association would take down all of the, the names of who's on staff, who are the doctors, where are their license plates, where are their cars, not too dissimilar from any other office project where you're parking in structures. These are all monitored with license plates to make sure they're parking in right locations. And so we would have the same system set up here. Any patients or visitors would not be a part of the, these lift systems. They would be free to park in the 120-plus other stalls throughout the parking site. So the valet attendant would be there for, for all business hours. In order to create, you know, not to have a queue, we, we decided to kind of implement down that pathway, six stalls, so that cars could get through. If there's, you know, a handful of cars being parked at the same time, they'll go, they'll park their car in that location, and then the valet will hand them, hand them their claim ticket. They'll have a number on it. If they want to, if they want to, you know, grab it at lunch, they'll put a phone call into him if they wanted to have it already out there. If it's up on the lift, up on the second, the valet will handle that, move it down into the, into the, back into those parking spaces for the medical professionals to come back and pick that up. So thank you for moving that over. Here's some views. These are, we had the architect based on the landscape plans, just kind of show, here's from Bristol. If you're driving with the landscape plan, with lift system, here's what you would expect to see as you're driving on Bristol. I can go to the next image. This is a overview of all the new trees and kind of a, of landscaping that are, that we're planning to do. Next slide, to kind of more deep dive down into it. These, this is a site that emphasizes the 23 new perimeter trees, 14 on the north side and nine to the west. Next slide, please. 10 new trees at the entrances of Bruce and Bristol, six on the Bristol entrance and four on Spruce, and this is the type of tree. And then an additional 11 trees kind of within the parking islands, which would be sitting in front of the parking lift area as well, to kind of provide some additional screen from that lift as well. And so really, that's, that's kind of the, the overall plan with the landscaping. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding just the lifts that might come up. You know, for, as far as the use goes, and it's mentioned by David, you know, we don't plan, we don't have, we won't have any urgent care here. Our, our, the clients that we're targeting are appointment-only based clients. So these are, these are going to be medical practices that are calling in, making appointments. These aren't going to be walk-ins, people are just stopping by. And so we've, we feel that that is what will, you know, keep the density low at this project versus an urgent care where somebody might, is just showing up unannounced, and you might have different times where you just have a substantial load of, of users. Beyond that, you know, we've had interest from outpatient, outpatient surgery facilities as well for ground floor spaces, as they've noticed this in the public hearings. And so, you know, we, we've engaged with them and, and, you know, as looking in the parking code for the, for the city of Newport Beach, given that the larger surgery centers, they tend to have a larger space per patient, they're actually calculated under the same parking ratio as the one per 250 or four per thousand the general office is. And so we do see that that also might be some mitigating factor from a lower density usage across the board and, and why we feel comfortable with the parking. Unfortunately, Roger with RK Engineering was on vacation, so he's not here to be able to discuss the specific parking study that he put together, but I've had a handful of conversations, and I'm happy to answer any of those that might come up too as well. And that's, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant from commissioners? Looks like we, Commissioner Kleiman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm just curious, you mentioned the building of a actual parking facility is cost prohibitive, which we know and understand, but I'm, I'm curious about the cost of building and maintaining and operating this particular solution, and also if you can kind of speak to secondarily the underwriting for this project, and how do you underwrite for a project, you know, at a 70/30 scenario, worst-case scenario, you know? It's, it's not a static, it's sort of this, this moving target, if you will.
And when you speak to underwriting, you're saying, how do we just go about, about the business plan, not knowing whether it's 70, 180?
Yeah, like when you were doing your due diligence to buy the project and, you know, looking at the different scenarios, and then now going back to the project underwriting after, you know, all of these iterations up here and with staff, how do you then look at that picture and understand the economics of it so that you don't get stuck in the middle of the project of like, oh, we didn't expect this, and now we have, you know, less parking available than we thought, and we can't finish the project as planned, and
Sure.
We have these additional costs for this parking lift, et cetera.
Right. Well, you, you, we always have scenarios, you know, how much, whether, if we were to get to 50%. So when we acquired this property, obviously there was no guarantee on what, what would get approved on this project. It wasn't approved for 100% medical, it wasn't approved for 50% medical. And so we have various underwriting assumptions, you know, based on different scenarios to, that would determine, you know, well, if we got this much, you know, it would, you know, so it, so we look at it multiple ways, not, without the, without the knowledge of what ultimately will get approved. As far as for the cost for the lift systems with the structure, our expectation is, is it'll cost every bit of $400,000, $500,000 of an additional capital to add those lifts to, to the site. Operating, you know, I think a lot of the operation comes down to is, you know, typically if you were just hiring a general valet attendant for a few hours, you would pay a higher hourly rate for that time, but given this is more of a day, actual, this will be somebody who's more of an employee with the, with the project, and so I think that, that would be somebody who's really on staff, who is, is there, but, you know, it's just a part of what, what will be thrown into the overall cost of the association.
Any further questions?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. I have several questions. How many square feet usable will be in the three buildings that you're selling?
I believe usable, the actual occupy without common areas and all that, I believe it's around 26,000 to 28,000 square feet.
28,000 in the building's 35, that's a lot, 37 actually, so that's a lot of excess area. Like, I'm coming to the question of how many people will be working here? You know the business, you know office, medical's got more people inside working there, just curious, is there, what's the average size of a medical office in your opinion on this?
For this, it's going to be between 2,000 to 3,000 square feet typically. Given the, the parameters that we're setting of not having urgent cares, these aren't going to be the large institutions that are becoming to a project like this. These are more specialty clinics. This is your dentist, your orthodontist, this might be a chiropractor, and so typically, it might be as low as 1,500, but I would say typically 2,000 to 4,000 square feet.
But you basically will take any medical use that's not urgent care?
No, I think, no, not, not any use. I think obviously you, you want a project that, you know, the tenants, you know, work, that, that work together, they blend well together. Obviously, it's an association that, that we want to have that's in good standing, and so it wouldn't just be any and any medical, so.
All right. So what I'm trying to get at is how many employees will be here?
The only thing that we can point to from a data standpoint is that typically those office uses have about 30 to 35% of the square footage is assigned towards staff versus visitors, is, you know, 60, 65%.
All right, so how many employees? I'm getting at every employee comes in a car.
Right.
So I'm trying to figure out, will this parking lot be filled with employees?
No, based, based on that and the square footage, you would, you would, you would argue to say that you're probably looking at around 45 to 50 employees for the project, and then another
Say that again.
45 to 50 employees.
For the whole thing? 20,000, 20-some, 5,000 square feet? Wow. I find that surprising. That's low, in my opinion. I mean, every time you go into a medical facility, there's three nurses or people working behind the counter, then there's different rooms you go in. I'm, what I'm trying to circle around on is, if somebody's going to buy a condo office, they're going to want to know that there's going to be enough, you're not limiting how many employees they have. That's up to them.
Well, we, we are, we are evaluating every tenant, and we are, we have approval at the association level to approve, approve space plans, so we absolutely are understanding density of use, and that's obviously a concern for us as an owner, because as we sell off units, it, if we, if we start, if we start selling buildings into users that were noticing the buildings are, oh, these guys are building 12 exam rooms in a little 2,000 square foot space, well, that's a red flag right there, and there's no way we're going to approve that as, from an ownership standpoint, because we know that that parking is going to be well outsized for what their ratio is.
Back to the lift, so they, tell us how it works. And you said only the employees will park, so that sounds like 17.
17 plus the seven, so 34.
Well, anybody can park below, you can just drive in. I went by and looked at one.
Well, they won't have, no, they won't have access to any, the lift up, up or down. That, that area will be completely reserved, and it can only be, any cars can only go into that area by the valet attendant. Not even the employees can park in that area. It's purely, the, the vehicle will be valet dropped off in the, in the drop-off and pickup area, and that valet attendant will drive it into those 17 stalls. And so he will be solely responsible for the 17, well, 34 vehicles that are going up and down there. No, no visitors. No, no visitors and no doctors will be able to park in that area. It'll be, I mean, in a way it'll be blocked off.
Wait a minute, you said the doctors wouldn't be, I thought you said earlier that they're the ones who are supposed to take the upper and lower.
They will be, but they will not be parking there physically. They will be dropping their car off. A valet attendant will be handling that. We don't want to have the doctors or the, or the, or the staff operating the lift system.
And I, I went to one of them in Newport and I'm trying to figure, how does it work? Cars on top, cars on bottom? You have to move the lower one out of the way, tip the thing and it drives down or, and then you take up the drive aisle? How does, how does it work?
The, the vehicle just, there's just a lift system on the bottom. So when there is no cars, there's, the, the platform is on the, on the, at the surface level. So a car will be backed up into that space by the valet attendant. The valet attendant will get out of the vehicle and there is a, a, a switch basically and they'll hit the button and it'll operate and elevate up to a seven foot clearance. And then he can then bring another car underneath that, similar to just a valet with tandem parking. If there's a vehicle up top and a vehicle below, in order to get that second vehicle up top, he'll obviously have to move that other vehicle into another location or move it over to the drop off pickup area and then bring that car down.
And in the event you want to sell out 100% medical, are you planning to put another one of these lifts somewhere to pick up the deficit that you have for parking?
So if you go, you can go to the next slide here, I believe. So in red here, we've identified additional area where, and what we would envision is at that 70% checkpoint, if there is concern over parking, that there is a deficiency or we feel, and the city feels that it's encroaching, then this is, we, we would add additional, there's, you could add up to 21 lifts, which feasibly then would get you to the 188 spaces, the, the full deficiency. So that's, that would be part of the parking management plan towards the future is that in order to continue to add more medical or in the case that if, if there just was, you know, a couple tenants or, you know, adding more, adding more density than we were expecting and so we missed on those owner-users, here's some additional parking. And so this would be a way to alleviate that deficit.
Thank you for now.
Other questions inside? Looks like there's none for the applicant here.
So just back to what he was saying, if, if 70% comes along with condition number 10 and the community development director recognizes that there isn't a use further into the medical, then you have to then take the remaining and just put it to strict office use, correct?
Yeah.
And is there any compatible businesses that would work? You know, maybe medical billing, maybe some other non-medical intensity, but, you know, things like, what would you put like reality offices or, or would you put in there that would, would cover the 30%?
There's plenty of general office owner-users. I mean, there's a lot of projects in Newport Beach where it might be only, you know, 30 or 40% medical and the other 50 to 60% are general office or where, in projects where owner-users have gone to get a specific conditional use permit for a specific unit to add for medical within a project. And so really, in one way, how it could work is 70%, if you look at it on a square footage is how it would be looked at, that is the larger 1,400 square foot building. So 30% could be the 1420 building by itself. And so likely what, how we would look at it is, is we would, the 70% in our line would be to fill up the larger building first over time and then maybe this, and then kind of move over to the second building. But there's, there's substantial interest from the, the office sector in general, just for office, general office use as well. And so it's not uncommon to have, you know, office projects that have a mixture of, of medical and, and, and general office.
And, but then, then the lifts wouldn't be necessary, correct?
The lifts would still be.
No, not the current ones, but these additional ones.
Additional lifts, no. So that, so that would be, that would be a way to look at it to say if the, if the city ultimately said, we're good with 17 lifts, we really don't want any more of these, we're going to cap you at 17, 70% medical. And so then, you know, we would then move forward with the remaining 30% as just general office.
When do you anticipate 70% happening? One, if we approved here and, you know, got approved and started your build out, what, what would you think 70% would hit?
Typically, right now, I mean, the, the biggest, the longest timeframe right now on the condominium conversion for actual sale is with the county and getting a final parcel map is taking anywhere from six to nine months. So that just for, that order for a sale. But I guess getting approval for just allowing for medical, we could start then engaging with the various medical practices that have been, you know, reaching out on the project after hearing about it. I can tell you, there's probably enough interest that I don't know when they would, when they would commence or when they would want to commence construction on the inside of the space. Because obviously the 70% would be determined based on a full certificate of occupancy, they actually be physically in the space. So I think it, my best guess would be nine to 12 months from now. That would be great.
Could be up to maybe two years though, right?
It could be two years before we really get to 70%, true 70% with, with the, with the tenants in occupancy as well as the six month delay period. Once that 70% is established, we would wait for six months to make sure that they're all fully utilizing the space before the, then that parking study is done and completed.
Yeah, because the condition says no earlier than six months, but would you be happy to, you know, push that a little bit, you know, further in, in a sense or asking for, you know, if, if we were to be supportive of this tonight, you know, having some form of call for review, that we look at this, you know, in the future so that we make sure that your parking study is, is more closely identified to what's going on in that area and the demand for those types of conversions.
And when saying in the future, just so I understand?
You know, in, in several years. I mean, obviously this is something that's in the condition here, but says six months, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, you're, you're telling me it could be as far as 12 months, could be even further up to two years. So I want to make sure that that's, that study is done in a, in a, in a better, in a better sense.
Yeah, the, the six months, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, planning staff, is once the 70% has been occupied by the medical practices, they're in occupancy, they received their certificate of occupancy, at that point, the six month clock. So what I'm saying is it could take, you know, 12 to 15 months to get 70% occupancy. From that point in time, a six month clock would begin.
Gotcha.
And so that would be arguably then 18 to 21 months from, from, from that time, from that, this time period or, you know.
Yeah, and I think the community director, well, development director would do a good job in making sure that this body gets a chance to review that if we're, we're into that. But I, I think I just want to make sure we have some additional protections that it does look at it in the future to say, we're, we're doing the right thing.
Right.
The landscaping, I'll, I'll slip over to that. I'm on a Google image here and the trees that I see that you had placed, to me doesn't block out the 1401 quail. So, you know, it still leaves if, if a person's driving in here and they see that there's no parking, but they can easily look through with just trees to see, oh, 1401, there's some parking there. Would you be interested or, or would you accommodate some type of hedges that would prevent people from parking in there and then cutting across?
Yeah, we, we can, we can, instead of more of a tree line or, or you're saying in between those trees as well to prevent additional?
Yeah, and just the, the trees of the, of the pictures that you showed, it, it's very simple for anyone to walk through. So right now I'm looking at some hedges and you just do a hop and a skip, you can get right over. But I can physically see parking spaces open here. So I want to make sure that your visitors aren't seeing opportunities right in front of them. And just by sheer nature of, of people, you, you go to a gym and you watch people walk out and they go and park in the closest place that they can. You would think they'd want to go to the furthest place because they're getting exercise, but they park right in the very front. So by nature, I think people are looking to, to park wherever they see something that's easy and convenient. So I think to mitigate that some visuals are.
Absolutely add that, that type of barrier, I guess you'd call it, to, to prevent that.
Okay. And then back to the, to the valet. So if there's an attendant there from 7 to 6 PM, what do we do about those who have either early arrivals or late departures as far as the staff members? So will the valet be in charge of just making sure that that's handled and then those spots are just left somewhere else?
So that's, those, those cars would all be, so in the, in the event of a late departure, those cars would obviously, if they're up in the lift, would actually be pulled into the valet drop off area. And then my expectation would be is then that valet attendant would go personally to the various offices and drop off those keys, so, and just let them know where the space is. In the morning, I think similar, in the morning, it's, we would expect, you know, two or, it might, might be one or two, there might be a doctor coming in for an early, something early. They would park in that valet drop off area and given that we would already know the license plate number, whose car that is, the valet attendant could then go and grab the keys and, and move that car once, once the normal business hours came into play.
And they're forced to park in this.
They're forced, this.
That'll be part of their agreement.
This will be a part of their agreement, it'll be in the CCNRs that this, this area is designated only and is forced. And so they will need to provide a list of all their cars with their license plates so that the valet attendant, one of their responsibilities will also be monitoring, similarly to, you'll see it at parking garages, you know, the security or some attendant will walk around checking reserve parking, making sure the right cars are not, you know, parking in a reserved space that's not theirs. And so they'll be doing that occasionally as well.
How, how many employees will there be on the valet side?
Well, you have, you'll have 30, you'll have 34 spaces plus the, plus the, you know, six additional valets, so you have 40 to play with. And so my expectation is that we will likely achieve full utilization of the lift systems, approximately 70 to 75% medical office. That's, that's.
But how many employees of the valet team will there be?
One, right, at least.
Is one guy going to do all this?
Yeah, because our expectation is, is that there's, there's not going to be a consistent flow all at one time. And if there is, then we would obviously monitor and add an additional resource. So a lot of this is going to be as, as it gets brought on, obviously there's, it's, you're not going to be at, go from zero to 70. And so obviously we would look to add an additional valet attendant, whether it's, if we figure out there's peak demand time in the morning or is it four o'clock in the afternoon? Is it lunchtime where we see most of the staff and, and doctors coming down? Well, then obviously we would, we would look to ramp up and have a, a specific second valet attendant to kind of handle that load. Obviously that would, we would evaluate that in, in real time as we start to see the data and see the traffic.
And any vehicle can use this lift if you have Suburban, if you have a Porsche, if you have lower?
The lift, the lift load for the second level is, is 6, 6,000 pounds. A Tahoe curb weight is about, you know, in the 5,000. So you predominantly, you're going to use more, you're going to probably put more of your larger SUVs, you're going to put on, on the, on the surface lot and you're going to move more of your sedan cars up on the second level is how we understand the manufacturer recommends utilizing it. But it can hold a midsize, midsize SUVs can go up there. So it's, it's not limiting by a substantial amount of cars.
And, and then my last question is just you had said that the valet would likely serve as somebody who kind of monitors to make sure that the right people are parking in the, in the lift. Well, you know, is, one, is that enough dude, I mean, is there enough time for that person to be doing all that other work? But will they also be able to serve as kind of a, you know, a monitor to enforce or alert the building of parking deficiencies or people who are cutting over from 1401 or?
Absolutely.
So I just, I want to make sure that that staffed adequate to be able to handle the lifts, but also to kind of keep an eye on things too. So I want to make sure that one guy can handle all that. But if you're, you're saying that if that's not the case, you would reevaluate and make adjustments?
Yeah, we, we're obviously running the association and so, you know, we want to make sure the project's running well. We, we, you don't sell out of five units and you still have 20 to go. And so we want to make sure it's running like a well-oiled machine. And so some of this stuff is, are great questions and things that we will obviously address and we will absolutely need hire and have more on staff at certain hours depending on, on load. If there's just too much for, you know, say between the hours of eight and 10 o'clock, we need two, we need two people on staff there and that second person's also there from three to five.
Sorry, I just thought of one other thing too. I, I did speak with applicant, your consultant, Mr. Greer, and I guess he had spoke with the adjacent neighbor and they had a good conversation as far as what I'd heard when I spoke to both him and to the, to the neighbor. And there was a discussion about potentially he had a few spots of excess that he could be willing to work into an arrangement with. But ultimately that never really got discussed because it wasn't enough to really satisfy this. But would you consider evaluating that again if there was heartburn on this commission as far as looking at a couple more additional spots that could be utilized?
We would absolutely look at additional parking spaces in the adjacent sites. It was just our understanding and working with staff that there were no sites, even though I could argue that off, the office users, general office users in that area don't use anywhere near 4.4 or 5 per thousand, which is the general office code for that planning area. For example, when we, prior to our acquisition of this, and this is obviously no parking data study like RK Engineering, but I specifically walked our site just to understand the parking usage. And we, of the 154 stalls that are, that are there right now, obviously what we've talked about is 150 when reworking and adding more ADA, but the 154 that are there today, the building was 100% leased, it was 96% occupied, this is pre-COVID, and there are 80 stalls available in the parking lot. They were utilized, the, the, the office users were utilizing less than a two per thousand office ratio. So I think absolutely there are parcels, the adjacent parcels have excess parking. I think the question with staff was, is do they have excess over and above the actual code to be able to allow us to have permanent rights to those? But we're, we would absolutely love to find an arrangement to utilize the adjacent neighborhoods if that's, if the city's allowed to do that versus this lift system.
And I think that that owner would have to work out something, but also understand that on, on your end, that he may want to develop his property similar to yours one day and then he may have a parking issue. So then that would just come right back to you down the road. But I'm just looking at trying to satisfy some issues now, but I think I've gone on long enough, so I yield my time.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Rosin?
This is for the applicant and maybe for staff as well, but, and David, if you don't mind, you, there was a slide that showed some additional areas that, additional lifts could be added that would get you to the 188 that are required. And I heard you speaking about optionality as to whether or not you would do one way or the other, but I don't understand why, or maybe there's a reason, you aren't just proposing to meet this, the requirement with completing with all the lifts? Or did I misunderstand something? When that, there were some additional areas, correct? That's in addition to, if I heard correctly, that would get you to the 188. Is that not true?
That would get to 188, correct.
And there's a reason that you're choosing not to just come before this body with the required amount?
Well, one, it's, it'd be, you know, that, that much more additional cost to be invested for something that the parking study, you know, a parking study has stated we should have a surplus. And I think with the 70% check, I think that time, that's where we, we envisioned, we could have that at real, truly valuation, once we actually had real data on the physical site based on the actual medical office uses being performed there. And so at that point in time, that could be evaluated. And then the question obviously would be up to, to staff for that, the amount of lifts, that's a substantial amount of lifts and screen and everything else, that's a, it'd be a substantial cost as well.
The optionality is based on taking a look at this after six months of being in operation and taking a look at parking counts, et cetera, and then coming back and verifying. That's, I think, what I.
Yeah, Commissioner Rosin, maybe I can explain kind of staff's rationale here. You know, the, the parking data that's in front of us here suggests that they should have sufficient parking given the amount of lifts that they're proposing right now. And with the, the 70/30 check-in, if you will, when we do some empirical counts out there to see how it's working and we evaluate it, you know, then we can make a decision. You know, we didn't want to go ahead and just say, hey, just comply with the code just because that's the simplest thing to do. It's a lot of investment there for something that may not be necessary. So the thought would be, you know, let's, let's see how this goes. If the parking analysis, the actual count at the 70/30. see how this goes. If the parking analysis, the actual count at the 70 percentile occupancy, um, warrant additional parking, then we can go from there with, in consultation with the applicant and, and they may need to do some additional lifts. Um, but again, we just didn't want to be premature and require that level of investment before the need was with us.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other question?
I, I don't want to get away from that. Um, I tend to agree with Blas' comments. You know, you need to have 188. You're going to be deficient. You're wanting 21 car deficiency. That's 11% plus the four because the site wasn't designed properly with correct widths on here on page nine. You know, I think it's going to be dangerous to have this parking lot with these uses underparked from the beginning. If, you know, cause you, you're concentrating on the 70% medical, but the other office leases up or people buy, you probably lease it until you sell it. You'll have a hundred percent occupancy, let's assume. And you have a pro farmer that says when that will hit, you hope. You're going to be only, you're going to be 20s, how many cars? 22 cars below what you need. That's a lot. Why wouldn't you? I don't understand why that's going to make sense. Customers can't get in and out. Patients can't get in and out. Yeah. I think where commissioners are speaking of, and maybe on that back line back there where you have 90 degree parking, you put in the rest of them. But if you're going to put these lifts in, which are interesting, it's an interesting concept. Um, so you're, and this is to staff too. They're, they're coming in with a deficiency and they're asking for a variance, modification. We call it a lot of things in the staff report, but I'm not, I'm not supportive of that alone. By the way, I went down and looked at 441 and I talked to a doctor coming out and I said, how do the lifts work here? He said, we've been here since 2015, I guess. It's never been a car there. I don't even know how to use it. Nobody's talked about it. There's, and there was no valet. And I read your conditions. They had to have one. There isn't one. Um, and I just said, you gotta be kidding. So I went back. And by the way, there were only two open spots in that little parking lot they have, two. And there were two cars parked the wrong way in the bottom of the lift. I went back today about 4:30, few more opening, a lot of, that weren't that busy. Still, nobody, and to say that after all these years, they haven't even used it. It's interesting. I, I just, I'm skeptical of this stacking concept, but more or less, um, just the issues of being, uh, overdeveloped, underparked with, with medical. Um, by the way, you said that some of your studies, when did you buy the property? What year more or less?
Uh, we closed on at the very beginning of March 2020.
This year?
Last year.
Last year. Okay. Full of COVID. Nobody's driving into office buildings. They were all sent home. People working.
Pre-COVID.
Well, right after that, all these parking.
Right, right after. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, they're all empty. The area photographs I looked at in here, I, uh, I went currently to look at cars in the lot, but still people still aren't going in the offices. Maybe by next year, if we knock on wood and hope this thing blows over. Um, I don't know. It's just, it looks good, but I'm afraid. You got to plan for the worst and hope for the best. But those are my comments right now.
Commissioner Wagon, did you have? No more?
I did.
Okay. All right. Might want to, um, go ahead. We'll go ahead and take public comments and then we might have some follow-up questions at the end. Is there any public comments on this item? Feel free to come up and feel free to come up and state your name and try to limit here to three minutes per, per comment.
Good evening. My name is Yusuf Ibrahim. I am a tenant at 1420. And I have a question for the applicant, if you'd be so kind. Are you going to start at 1400 to turn it into medical?
We, sir, yeah, we'll, we'll be, we'll be able to ask that question. Yeah.
Oh, apologies. Okay. Yeah. I'm just concerned if they're going, my concern is during the construction on 1420, that would be major disruption to our business. So how either they do the whole building and everybody leave, but I just don't feel comfortable. A lot of construction going on in the parking lot, landscaping and the whole building 1400, which I wish them the best. But how about us? With all these disturbances? 1420.
I'll ask the question on a construction timeline once at the, what his thoughts are.
That's my only concern.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any further questions or comments?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jim Light. I'm the property owner adjacent at 1401 Quail Street. Um, I believe the property most affected by this proposal. Um, me as you are, are mostly concerned with the parking and the potential impact. Um, if the parking situation is not satisfactorily, satisfactorily addressed upfront, they're going to park in my lot. It's, as you pointed out, it's easy to get around and even go into the parking or to the sidewalk and coming around. So I'm in favor of, um, meeting the code. The code is there for a reason. Let's meet the code, especially when there is a viable, uh, solution, either adding lifts or, um, uh, reducing the square footage of conversion to medical use. One other point I'd like to, to present is, um, the square footage in the report, 37,000 and change is materially different than what was advertised when the property was for sale. There were public brochures that showed 42,000 plus square feet. So there's a 5,000 square foot difference. Given that that is a material amount of square footage, it seems like that, if there is a question relative to that, I have it obviously, um, it, the answer can be known and determined. There's a building there. It can be measured and we can figure out exactly how many square feet there are. I realize the city records show the 37. It was advertised at 42. I don't know why the difference is. I don't imagine brokers are lying, but I don't think the city's lying. I'm, I, I just, I would like to, I, the, the difference is determinable. And I think this issue with parking, which is driven by square footage, we should take the time and effort to verify what the actual square footage is. So we know what square footage and parking we're, we're dealing with here. Um, lastly, um, uh, the, um, yeah, I'm going to leave you with that. So thank you for your attention and your concerns for the parking in the neighborhood. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Light.
Any que, no, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer anything.
Just looking at the staff report, it shows 37,515 square feet.
Right.
So there's a bunch of numbers out there that's not, there aren't nailed down. Um, I just wanted to put, it's in the record here of the staff report under required findings.
Well, now that, maybe we'll ask staff if there's an official, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Light. Appreciate it. Any other further questions? You know, maybe if I can ask the applicant to come up and just, I actually had the same question as the gentleman there. I just kind of a construction timeline and obviously medical office is going to require a little bit different of interior, interior improvements, um, you know, uh, you know, versus a general office in terms of, you know, what's required for medical. So is there, are you, are you at the point yet where you can, you have a conversion, um, construction plan or anything around those, along those lines? And how that would affect the adjacent buildings?
The exterior facade would be, would be the start and not too dissimilar from many commercial buildings. You know, renovations are always ongoing while occupants are in space. And so there is disruption. And so you try to minimize that to the, the best of, to the best of our abilities. No interior spaces are to be impacted by, um, you know, for existing tenants who have leases in their place. That, these are obviously the work that would be done on interior spaces would be spaces that don't have tenant occupants in them. So it'd be no dissimilar than from a general office building that has a tenant improvement job going on next door to a tenant that has a vacancy or that is an occupancy. So, and no way does, you know, the, the project, but as far as the timeline goes, um, you know, our, our plans are in with the, with the city. And so they're kind of, you know, kind of timeline together here to, but I wouldn't expect construction to start for, you know, at least a few months. And, um, you know, we, we obviously would, would work around the tenants and try to, you know, minimize the disruption as much as possible.
And I guess the intensity is going to vary, obviously a dentist with the various things that, that, that he or she would need versus a chiropractor is going to be a, a different build. So is there any other questions for the applicant as we finish up the, okay?
There seems to be a lot of concern surrounding, uh, what's going on here. I guess I have a question. Would, would you be open to as the applicant of either pulling back the amount of medical or us mandating, um, that you, at 70%, so maybe the capital LA on your behalf is not upfront, but once you hit 70% that it's mandated that we have to put in the additional lifts?
Before we go there, um, the, the conversation about 70%, if we hit 70% medical and the remaining is professional, we will actually only be two cars short or two spaces short. So there really is not a significant shortfall if we cap it at 70. And that's why we chose that number to come back and say, okay, uh, based on our parking study, if we hit 70%, we're still significantly below what is mandated by the code. If we hit 70% and the reality is that that is as far as we can go, then we've hit that point. But at 70%, the parking is, is, except for two cars, where it should be.
Secretary Elmore, can I clarify really quick?
Yeah.
So that two spaces short is without the parking lifts. So if you factor in the parking lifts, it would be 15 space surplus actually, um, when it's at 70, 30, based on the calculation. Just want to clarify. But without the parking lifts as is about 150 spaces, it would be too short.
I understand, but the additional lifts would give them the opportunity to go to a hundred percent medical. So that's where, that, that's putting my point, would you would be willing to either A, for the benefit of us trying to work with you on this, pull back the ratio, or B, just mandate that you put them in and go all the way at 70%?
I think given, given the, the capital investment of it further to expand that and against what the parking study states, we have a surplus. Uh, my, my recommendation would be, you know, what my, is that, you know, that's why we preferred the 70% because at that point in time, we then would be able to evaluate that. We can't go beyond, beyond 70%. So at that point in time, we could then add that capital investment and, you know, and add additional lifts, uh, for the project. Um, from a parking ratio standpoint, you know, I, I understand the code, um, but I look out at office projects and parking structures all over the city, Newport Beach that sit empty. And it's not just Newport Beach. That's a lot of markets. And so, um, you know, obviously the parking status, data, parking city data has shown, you know, a, a, a much smaller parking ratio than what the, the code states. And so I feel like we're following, you know, a, a parking state that was requested to prove our, prove out our case for variance.
Mr. Kanning, do you have a?
Yeah, Jim keeps referring to a parking study. Let's take the parking study and put it aside. Just do pure code. Right? That's what we have. We have standards for medical and standards for office as we do retail and restaurant, et cetera. What do they need just by city, city code standards at 70%, which is to call it 25,000 square feet?
If I understand what Mr. Lee was indicating, that they would be have a two-space deficit at 70% medical and 30%, uh, general office without the lifts.
And the difference is 4.5 versus four per thousand?
Well, it, it, it's a little more complicated than that for medical. It is, uh, you know, one space for every 200 gross square feet of medical, and that's the zoning code standard. So it's five per thousand. Um, office is one space for every 225 square feet, if I remember correctly, because this is the Newport Place Planned Community. We can actually go to one space every 250 square feet, four per thousand. Um, I think through the approval of a modification permit. And, and the, the four per thousand ratio is consistent with our zoning code standard. And that is based on a net, um, office ratio. So we can get into the weeds on this one, but you know, at this point in time, we've got, if, if you're looking at a 70% occupied for medical, uh, without the lifts, you'd be short two parking spaces. Am I correct in that, David?
Yeah, you're correct.
But they're asking to build the lift now? Or is this something you're going to build if you need it?
No, this would be as a part of the approval.
So as Commissioner, uh, we would be looking at when the building got 70% occupied for medical, six months after that, we would then have them conduct or, or some point in time after that, at least six months after that, of operation with 70% medical, we would count the cars. We would, we'd survey what the parking ratio, uh, the actual parking demand is. And if it actually, uh, emulates what the parking data is that's before us, you know, there really shouldn't be a, a parking problem there. There should be some excess spaces if indeed, uh, the parking demand analysis that was submitted with this application holds true. So if it does turn out that way, then we would allow the conversion of the remainder of the building to medical.
All right. Hold comment for now.
I have a question for both David and Tony, just on this and kind of taking it from, from what the code requires to, to the other side of, of the spectrum in terms of where that parking study went. And it shows that that, that demand was 145 spaces. Is there, you have any comments to that? And, and looking at it, that it's, is that, do you feel like that study was, was there anything in there that was of concern or, or, or that you would give it even more merit of that 145 spaces? Is what was needed at demand at peak?
No, I, when I reviewed the parking study, I felt it was a valid study in terms of the count data that they collected at the other sites, comparable sites. So, so I think the parking study by itself is, is a, is a valid study.
That's okay. Thank you.
Sure. So that tells me, are we going to modify our parking codes from now on? Bring in a study and we don't have any parking codes? Show us what it's going to be. I mean, really?
Well, Commissioner Kanning, obviously we do have parking standards. One of the things that we are actively working on as we speak is an update to our parking standards. Cause what we have found is that in some respects, it over predicts and over requires parking. The applicant's observation that there are parking structures out there in the community that are empty. That's true. Um, in many, in some cases, it, it underpredicts parking and we have parking shortfalls. So, you know, the code is just a predictor of demand. It's not, it's not as precise as we might like it to be. Cause as we all know, different retail uses will generate different parking, but the ratio is the same. The same is true for medical. Um, but what we're finding in our initial results is that even our code at five per thousand for medical often is actually more parking than's required. I, I know we all have experiences at certain sites that just don't work properly. And, and, and they may be filled with uses that have, you know, a very intense environment, um, an unusual medical use that has a lot more employees or a lot more clients. And, you know, I think we've all been to those sites. Um, but, but on average, it, it may not prove that five spaces for every thousand square feet is actually necessary. So as a, to kind of sum up, you know, we are evaluating our parking standards. We do envision coming back, uh, to the, to the planning commission and the city council recommending changes to that. In some respects, these parking standards will go down. But we haven't completed that analysis. And so I can't really go beyond what I've indicated here.
Yeah. And my, my question there is, is really if they're asking for some type of modification, if we call it variance or modification. So I'd like to, I'd like to look at what that, what that parking study says. And, and with, with our staff giving validity and believe that that parking study is, is valid. And as part of the findings, it, I, I want to keep that as a point as we discuss this. So it's important to me what, what staff believes and appreciate that. So is there any other questions for applicant? None?
So Commissioner Kanning had brought up, um, as far as when there's a lot of access and.
and demand for the lifts, what is the peak parking demand staff would, for that center? When is, when is, when are the most spaces being utilized? And will that be, will the lifts be impacting, leaving, coming and going, you know, is lunchtime that time? I mean, if staff is forced to use the lifts and it's lunchtime, will they be, you know, going out to get lunch and driving in and out? Because a lot of doctor's offices close for an hour between 12 and 1 for lunch. So, you know, is that a, is that going to cause impact for the rest of the, and be a potential safety hazard?
Well, if I can answer the, the peak periods, the IT parking generation manual talks about roughly 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM is a, is a morning peak. And then again, about 2:00 to 3:00 PM in the afternoon. So those are, those are the peak periods during the day. And the numbers are fairly consistent. They're not, there's not wild variations, but 10 to 11 in the morning, 2 to 3 in the afternoon.
Okay, okay, cool. And then, and then, Jim, you know, how hard is this going to be enforced, you know, if we have to get to that 70, 30 discussion for the office, you know, 10, five, 10 years from now, when these things go up for sale, if somebody, you know, sells a unit, you know, how do, how do you juggle that? And, you know, is that, obviously, you said it's not something you often do, but, you know, what are the triggers that alert that so that it's guaranteed that, that an office doesn't get accidentally converted or there's mistakes along the way?
Well, maybe the applicant can kind of attest to this one, but, you know, when we see the initial build out occurring, we'll be tabulating the total. And when we get to 70%, we're not going to issue any TIs for medical use. And I think if we reach that point in time, it would be incumbent upon the owner and the HOA to provide notice to their tenants that, you know, especially if the city then comes in and does the analysis and the parking is a problem and it's not a sol, it isn't solvable, then there would be a limitation of 70% on the building. I don't envision getting to that point, but if we do get to that point, then those owners would have to be put on notice that they couldn't convert to medical. And that would have to be, you know, some mechanism in the agreement.
It would, it would be part of the CCNRs in the sense that if you sell unit A, you're selling it as a medical unit. If you sell unit B, you're selling it as a professional unit. And as Jim said, if you want to take that unit B, which is a professional unit, and convert it to medical, you'd have to come back here, get a CUP, and do all of that stuff. So there are inherent and internal mechanisms throughout the application process that will be enhanced by the sale process to, to achieve those goals.
Yeah, it seems to me condition 10 is kind of the fail safe, too, and leaves a lot of staff to, to work that through. So, you know, Jim, do you think that there's any modifications to condition 10 that protects, you know, the adjacent properties that protects, you know?
The only modification I was thinking about for condition 10 is in the first sentence to clarify that, you know, when the occupant says they have been attained for, you know, 70% of medical office uses, I'm going to insert that phrase right in that sentence there. But, you know, I think this mechanism here provides that a spot where we actually review the actual parking demand. We, you know, we're empirically counting cars in the parking lot at that point in time to see the utilization over time and over several days, to make sure that if we go to the rest of the building as medical, that, you know, we're not creating a parking demand issue. Because we're cognizant of the fact there's no street parking in the area. Obviously, it could be convenient to use the neighbor's property. We don't want to see that. But we think that this check-in point at the 70% gives us that ability to protect the area.
Okay. So if we get to that spot, will you, you know, give us what your stronger language would be on that?
I'm not sure. I was really proposing.
I thought you said in the first, in the first sentence.
Oh, the first sentence.
Could make that a little.
Sure. What, what I would say here is, you know, it reads, a parking study shall be submitted no earlier than six months after certificate of occupancies have been obtained for medical office uses for 70% of the building. And it just clarifies that that's the, the trigger point. Right now, it's a little ambiguous, you know? They could have, they could have 100% occupancy right now. We haven't done the study, and there is no medical in the building because it is an occupied building. So it's, it's really for that, that 70% medical.
And do you think that this commission should review it, you know, in addition to the community development director beyond that, you know, to say, you know, after that threshold has been hit, that this committee should, or this body should get a chance to review it? Or do you think that the community development director is the appropriate place for it?
I think the community development director is the appropriate place for this review. I think what the director can do is also provide the commission a report on what they're finding. I don't, I don't think that we should come back and have, and obviously, this is to the commission's discretion. You can obviously disagree with me here. You can require that it come to you for consideration. But, you know, we can do the evaluation, and we can write a simple memo and provide you a report of what we're finding at that point, and, and we can bring that to the commission, rather than having a kind of a formal hearing, if you will.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And the commission always has the discretion to pull it up from that report if they, if they would like. All right. Any other questions from the applicant before we close? All right. Commissioner Kleiman?
Not so much a question, just kind of more discussion, piggybacking on what everyone else has been saying. And I kind of think that the answer to Commissioner Rosine's question about why not just build the lifts necessary to start, the answer being it's cost prohibitive, right? I think it's telling in that the project either works or doesn't. I've been sitting here trying to figure out, and we've been kind of poking at this in different directions and in different ways, to figure out how it pencils. And it sounds like it really does, and it, we're just still, as we were last meeting on this issue or on this item, trying to figure out how to get this, I keep saying this, this square peg in the round hole or vice versa, however the saying goes. And it, it was surprising to me to see the report come back with this solution. I don't know that any of us anticipated or, you know, expected to see this lift as a solution to have this item come back. I think we were all expecting, or at least I was expecting, that they would play with the use a little bit rather than come up, or come up with solutions with the neighboring properties, et cetera, for a parking management plan. But I certainly was not anticipating this, this lift solution. And I'm not sure that it's a, it's a great solution, if for no other reason than, obviously, we don't, we're not here to tell you how to, how to underwrite your projects and to do your job or run your business. But it, as, as Commissioner Wigan mentioned earlier, I just think there, there are a number of practicality issues with these, and I'm sure you, as the developer, recognize that as well. Like, there's nothing great about marketing a project with a lift in it. I think that's going to be difficult. And I just think we haven't come too far from this discussion and this scenario in the last iteration in that, you know, there's just, there's still this, this middle ground, this middle point that it's, it's, you know, unclear how this is going to play out at best. I, for one, would like to just see it be whatever it is from the start. Either it's 100% one use or 100% the other, or it's 70, 30, and there's no opportunity, you know, for movement later on. I think that's not a recipe for success. And I think really, my concern in all of this is just really trying to set the applicant up for success and also the neighboring property owners, and of course, ultimately, the users of these medical spaces. So, I mean, I was, I noticed in the staff report, and I think you or someone mentioned it, I can't remember who, the, the reduction or the, the lower requirement for the surgery center, I think that was something that was, you know, kind of a flag for me, like, that's more of a solution to me than, than the lift or, you know, some of these other scenarios. And that's kind of what I was expecting. Some, some combination of that less intensive use and, you know, the addition of some, you know, neighboring property owner spaces, that kind of ultimate solution versus what we're looking at here. I don't know that anybody's, including the applicant, I would think, and certainly the staff, loving this lift idea. So I, I just, I for one would, like, like I said, like to see either commit to, you know, the hybrid scenario upfront and just leave it at that, and, you know, convert some, leave some for office and, and just, you know, kind of know the project's fate and move forward that way. Or go back to the drawing board and try to work around, you know, whether it's including a couple of surgery centers, if you can even do that, if that's something that, you know, they can compete and be next to each other. I don't, I don't know the market well enough to, to say, and it's not my job. But to reduce the, the intensity and therefore the ultimate parking need, I just think it's a guessing game, even if the parking study shows that we expect that it should be met. It just leaves too many unknowns, and I think becomes really impractical in terms of trying to then figure out how to make the project viable from that point and from staff's perspective. It's just, it's just too messy, I think.
Thank you.
There's got to be a better approach.
All right. Any other questions for, before we close the public comments? Do you want any rebuttal or anything from, any of the comments from the applicants?
Just quickly, we have looked at all those options, and unfortunately, the nature of the space, the nature of the physical layout, this is the best option we have. And again, if we go to 70% and we put a lift in, we're still 15 cars over capacity in terms of we can, we can add an additional 15 cars somewhere, or we can just leave it at 70%. And again, that's why we're putting that trigger in there, to take a look at it at that point. Where we are now, we believe that, given the, the parking study, given the realities of the 70, 30, we are compatible, we are in compliance. And it only gives us the opportunity at that 70% to see if we're still in compliance or not. And if we're not in compliance, then Mr. Campbell or whoever is in charge at that time can say, no, you can't do anymore. So we have, in fact, restricted what we can do. We have, in fact, given the commission and the staff the ability and the mechanism to say, you're not going to be able to overpark it. We're going to put a lift in that's going to give us 15 extra spaces that we may or may not be able to use, depending upon the data. But you have that control. And I think that's really important, that we can't do it any further than 70% without your approval coming back. And so it's not messy. It's, it's where we can get right now, looking at all the options. We've tried, we've talked to Mercedes-Benz, we've talked to the neighbors. It just doesn't work. Nobody has space to lease us to let us go any further. So by clapping at a 70%, we are restricting what we can do unless we get approval from you. So.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close, unless you have one more question for the applicant?
Yeah, trying to follow the logic here, because I'm tending to agree with Commissioner Kleiman on this. If you go to page eight, medical office parking requirement, 188, provided 167, deficit 21, period. You don't have 188 stalls on the property with the lift, the way I see it. Jim, what's the number?
You're correct. This is a parking waiver, you know, for 100% of the building to go to medical, there is 21 spaces deficit. And that includes the lifts.
Right. And I think we're, you know, I heard it from other commissioners, maybe the percentage of medical should just be reduced. Work it down to 60, 55, 60, I don't know the number, but there's got to be a drawing, a line in there where there is no need for a waiver. Or we're going to be waiving everything on every office retail project we see. I mean, it's just common sense.
If there's no more question for that, unless we close the public hearing, then we can have that discussion amongst ourselves. Any other public comments seen? Then we'll close the public comments.
I was just going to, to the extent that the conditions may be modified or what have you, we'll just want to make sure that the applicant has reviewed and agreed to the conditions.
We'll reopen now. All right. So we'll discuss that amongst the commission and questions to staff, questions entertaining any motions. Maybe I'll start. You know, with the change that we're seeing with, with, you know, office and how that's going to change, not only just COVID, but just other things as, as the market, you know, changes throughout, what, what demand is. And we're seeing more and more medical office demand that we, we've seen in the city, at least for kind of some of the prior requests that have come up to us. You know, you kind of think, okay, well, we need to, or we need, you know, we're looking at, at some things may not fit every box every time it, it comes in front of it, just with, with some of the change. And I, and I completely see Commissioner Kitting's, you know, concern about we can't, you know, just change, change a regulation code, et cetera, just, just because, you know, just because maybe a parking study says, says something one way. But on the other hand, I, you know, I, I see this a lot of times as a planning commissioner, I don't feel like we have the discretion to, to really, to be more of a subjective, I need to be more objective. And, and, you know, I follow what staff says on their findings, and then if I disagree with the findings, that's, I, I come up with my support of that disagreement and would make my, my decision upon that. I guess on this, it's, I see the concerns, and I'd like to just hear from the commissioners what finding that the staff has that, that they disagree with and kind of discuss that. And then kind of what Commissioner Wagon spoke about in terms of condition 10, you know, that satisfies me for, for if there is a potential over, you know, overpark situation or a lot of, or, or things are going, you know, differently than we hoped, or let's see what the applicant hoped or planned, I think there's a way to, to modify that once we got to that, to that mark. Satisfies me and, and maybe that little extra, that a report would come from, come up to us that, you know, everything's either being met or, or there's some concerns, and we could use our discretion to call that up if, if we wanted to. So that's my input of the.
Yeah, I think, I think condition 10 is a fail safe, and I think there is protection in there. Yes, it is. It gets confusing, and staff has to do an extra round of work with it. But I think that it's written in a way, especially with Jim making a slight tweak to it, that I think that it does help. The lift is a gamble on their part. So if the staff comes back and says 70% is your lock, you're, you're, you're out of luck. That lift provides now a surplus of parking, not just the deficit. So I would be supportive of this. I'm not a huge fan of the lift, but there is no way, as the, as applicant said, that this is kind of what he's working with. I do want to add a couple other conditions. I think the landscape border, that needs to be put in place so that there's no hopping over, and it needs to be significant so that, that people don't see an entrance area that we have to work with. And I also think 16, condition 16, that talks about valet, I think there needs to be a little bit more oomph to that, that the valet has either more powers or we, they have to add some type of security that makes sure that, you know, the enforcement is being done into the center. So I'm not sure what the commission would think about adding a little bit more to 16, because that one valet guy, to me, isn't going to be able to really enforce much if they're working all day. They're not going to be able to pay attention to what's going on. So I don't know if a security guard needs to be, you know, out in the parking lot and, you know, at least into the, the beginning of this first years to, to, to see what's going on. But I think that, that, that should be something to be looked at.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Kitting?
I think there was an understanding there'd be no urgent care in this, but it's not in the conditions.
Good point.
Condition number 11 says high trip generating medical uses such as urgent care facilities are not permitted.
Okay. I stand corrected. There it is.
All right. The commissioners have any concerns down there? Commissioner Rosine, Kleiman, anyone?
I want to be supportive of business in our city. And, you know, and I hope that staff realizes that, you know, questioning this parking study isn't, isn't anything other than just questioning the parking study. It's a parking study. We've heard it's valid. We have this mechanism that's been put in place with this 70, 30%. I think the problem that I'm having personally is the, this operational issue if you have this lift, and how does it really work at a, on a day-to-day safety, access, just parking movements, those sorts of things, as long as we can get comfortable with having the appropriate amount of valet people on site with, and it is more work for staff, this is something that's going to have to come back, staff's going to have to monitor that. I'm not a fan of. I'm not a fan of not being within the code, but we do have a traffic study. So I'm getting there.
Commissioner Wagon, did you maybe input on, on some of the updates to some of the conditions and maybe speak to that commission about that and if there's, you know, consensus on that, if, unless, Mr. Almore, if you had some.
I'm very much in lockstep with Commissioner Rosine on this. In number 10, the condition, or the conditions of approval for number 10, maybe at the, maybe instead of it just being the community development director receiving written authorization, we, we put, it's actually has to come back and get approved by the planning commission.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that, that satisfies me. The 16, add more valet security, does, you know, anyone want to help me come to what we think would be a better, a better thing that helps enforcement there? I mean, Commissioner Rosine did think as well that one valet guy is that adequate. You know, well, I guess maybe we could ask the applicant too, you know, as well because, you know, they're the ones that are going to have to foot the bill. You know, and if we can't get to that consensus up here is to support this item, I think the applicant needs to be, applicant needs to think, to see if we don't even have condition 10 and you just straight up say it's going to be 70% and, you know, 30% office and that's what you leave it at. And if, you know, you have to recognize that this body could say no to this proposal. I don't even know if staff, maybe our attorney can, can chime in. Is that even part of the discussion tonight, that, that, that it has to be capped at 70-30? You know, I don't know if we have to come back for that, for a different item.
If the project is being conditioned as such, then?
Well, if it's conditioned, yes, but, you know, if this body can't come to that consensus that we would agree to condition 10 and we think the staff would be able to enforce that and we say, you know what, we can't, we can't get past that, we want it to be capped at 70, not this staff review, once it hits 70, we want it capped at 70. Is that something we can, we can vote on tonight as well?
If the commission finds that a 70% cap would be consistent with the code, make the findings appropriately and obviously the, hopefully the applicant would be amenable to that, then I think it's an appropriate condition to require here.
I'm not suggesting that for me personally, but, you know, this body has to kind of start maybe straw voting or, you know, figuring that out here in this, as we get to that.
And just for, for the record, we would be happy to commit to at least two.
I was going to open up, yeah.
I apologize.
Is there more questions that we want to have for the, for the applicant? We'll open, we open up, okay, we do.
Saying then, it's, it's flat out, they cannot go breach 70%.
No, I, I think condition 10 is, is, is fine with me, I'm supportive. What I'm, I'm just sensing, we have six commissioners. If there's a tie vote here tonight, and I'm, I'm trying to read tea leaves here without getting into it, you know, I, I wanted to know if the attorney would, would allow us to just say, you're, you're, the 70, you're capped at, and we don't even have this condition 10, it's not relevant anymore because they can't go beyond 70%. But condition 10 allows them to go beyond 70% if staff reviews the parking study 60, 6 months into hitting 70%. So that's why, that's what that condition says. So I'm, I'm just making sure that we have the ability to do that, should the path of this commission go that route, since we closed the public hearing, I wanted, you know, we're talking kind of about ourselves, what we think here.
Wouldn't it be simpler just to have it capped at 70, 70-30?
But no, you wouldn't, no. So I, I think, I think condition 10.
Come back if you want to build more lifts and they become usable.
We would have to have that discussion, right, staff, as far as if more lifts were needed to be created at that point.
Yeah, that may be a solution. If indeed the parking demand exceeds what's out there, exceeds the plan and exceeds the, the information in the parking analysis, then, you know, some lifts, additional lifts could be an additional solution.
So, so in the way everything is right now, if, if the community development director sees that 70%, that's the cap, you guys are, are out, they have to adhere to the 30% for off regular use. But if they want to try to say, oh, we can add these lifts to that discussion, then I think probably would come back to us at some point and say, okay, they want to add these lifts and to exceed that 30% or to get whatever they want.
Commissioner Kleiman, if you had a question?
I mean, maybe it's getting late, but I thought at 70% didn't need the lift, not the additional lift, but the, any lift.
They don't, they don't need the lift if they have to stop for, and 30%, they, there would be a two, two-car deficit. So I guess maybe you need a lift for two cars or one.
No, I'm not suggesting they build a lift for two, for a deficit of two.
They're building it, the gamble, they're spending the capital to put in these lifts on the hope that the parking study that staff has prepared says that it's underutilized. And so that when it gets to.
What is it that you're proposing?
What I was proposing is nothing on 10 other than what I thought, you know, Jim kind of covered, that just made it a little bit stronger, that basically guaranteed that that first 70% had to be, you know, the office. We weren't talking about any, or I'm sorry, medical, we weren't talking about office. And then the other proposals that I had were to add a condition related to landscaping so that it's very secured in there, that visibly, you cannot see any open parking spaces in the surrounding properties. And then 16 was related to valet and, you know, we could make that stronger so that more valet has to be on site or they have to have some form of security on site, that's making sure that those that are working there park in the, the lift, they utilize the lift instead of skirting around it. And then they are also monitoring to make sure that should there be some type of parking deficit already identified, that people aren't parking in those surrounding parking lots. Because that's the neighbor's biggest concern, is people just parking there. They've dealt with it since it was Jim Slammons and it was Fletcher Jones and people parking in their lot. So they are cognizant of that people will park there and they don't want that. So this would be helpful to them by your HOA having to have a, a security guard in there that's making sure people are parking where they're supposed to be parking.
I just still have the same question I had earlier and I think that, that Commissioner Rosine had as well, which is, is, is it really economically that much more viable in terms of, of the project, you know, economics to build the lift and to get to 100% versus to stick with the 70% and not build the lift? And, you know, that's not, it's not for me to say, but it, it seems like a lot of hoops to be jumping through and to have this lift there that who knows if it's actually going to get used. We all have CCNRs and our HOAs that nobody listens to and, you know, it becomes a huge headache to enforce and just envisioning doctors having to park their, you know, name the, the luxury vehicle in this lift and, and I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around it. But I too echo the, the sentiments of this commission in that I want to, I want to support this property owner and I want them to get the highest and best use for their property. And if they've determined that this is it, medical office condos, then, you know, I'm, I'm all for trying to figure it out. It's just, I can't beat this feeling that, that we're just not setting this whole project up for success, but, you know, whatever, whatever the commission majority seems to think is the right thing to do, I'll support.
I mean, I feel that 70, the, well, condition 10 on the 7, when we get to, when they get to 70%, I, I feel like that's going to, in this, in this situation, is going to give first the, the city and then possibly then to us after that, you know, really an, an idea of, of where these numbers are coming in and if, if that's going to be, need to be built. I, I just, I really think that gives us kind of a little bit of a, I think Eric said earlier, like a relief valve, just in case something's not, not going the way or I would hate for Mr. Light's property to be parked on and, and if those kind of issues are coming up, well, we should know that by then and we can, you know, change or, or not approve that, that additional 30% without either other conditions or just flat out no.
Right, but then we'll be stuck with that lift either way, you know, if the project's not working and there is an issue and we still have this sort of eyesore of an approve. But, but again, you know, whatever the will of the commission is, I'll support. I again, want to be supportive of this applicant and they've certainly spent a lot of time, as has staff, on this.
Because if the lift isn't used, you're not losing any parking space. Yes, it might look, you know, unsightly, but it, it, it's not, we're not losing any space. And then as Commissioner Kettig said, he, he went to the site at Old Newport where it's not even used. If they're not using it, then they're not needing it. So it's a build there and it was a capital improvement that this office complex needed to expense, but if it's not being utilized, then it's underparked. So again, I go back to condition 10 and I, I think it's the protection there, the fail-safe that we need to allow this project to see what it sees. And the gamble is him putting in the lift and the fact that if we're at 70%, the, the community director says you're at 70%, the rest has to be office. As long as staff is confident that they can enforce moving forward when condos sell in there, that I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with everything.
If there's no other comments, how about if I, I'm going to reopen the public comments and, and we can ask the applicant if he agrees with potential condition changes. So we'll reopen public comments.
Thank you. We have no problem with anything that the commission has discussed and look forward to working with the commission to achieve those additional amendments. Staff's been very cooperative, we've tried to be as cooperative as we can and, yeah, we have no problem with any of it. We'll guarantee two valet people, we'll put the hedges in, we'll do whatever you guys request us to do.
Thank you.
I, I think it would be, you know, a couple valet and security, you know, you guys need to, you know, but staff, is there a language that we think we could, we could add to that condition to, to enhance condition number 16?
Sure, I think 16 can be enhanced by just the single word, by the valet shall be adequately staffed. I, I worry a little bit about dictating the number of tenants that they need at all times because they may not have, you know, there's going to be peak parking demands, they might need two, they might need one. I'd like to think that the applicant and the HOA can make those adjustments in real time. And I think when we do the parking check-in, we can evaluate it and, and monitor the situation. But it's really to the commission's discretion if you feel you need to dictate.
I would agree with the number, then perhaps condition, create a new condition and that would say something about security, that's their role is to making sure that there's enforcement of the staff using the lifts as well as making sure surrounding neighbors or tenants or whatever, not tenants, but surrounding properties are not being parked in, you know, something in that sense where, because just saying adequately staff for valet, that just only covers the lift, but it doesn't cover the staff that might try to skirt using the lift and then those that are guests using surrounding properties. So I, I think if the commission would be okay with adding an additional condition, then I think that would, that would satisfy me on that.
Long as there's not, I agree with, with Jim and as long as there's not like, not a number because, you know, who knows? But I agree with, I agree with the language in terms of that and, and, you know, there's also the, the association mechanism too, because if doctors aren't getting their cars, there's probably not going to be, the association, the management group, management group will probably not be their management group much longer and they would bring in another one. So, so I would think that's, I mean, there is some self-policing there in terms of.
Sure, I just want to make sure that the surrounding neighbors are protected and somebody's keeping an eye on people trying to come over from the other side.
Completely agree.
I have a question. I'm sure you went through all of these scenarios and again, it's late and we're going around in circles, but is there a way to condition it in the opposite direction? In other words, get to a number that everybody's comfortable with and then assess parking and require the lift if it's necessary at that point in time versus having them front the cost, build the lift, put it there, maybe people use it, maybe don't, and, you know, get to a point where they may or may not complete the condo conversion and it's just this.
Can I jump in?
First of all, yes.
If, if the commission wants to say, we don't have to put a lift in, but we can go up to 70% and we're two cars short, then that's acceptable because we get to the same place without the additional monies, absolutely. So if, if we're, we're at a checkpoint that we're going to hit, then if we go further, we have to drop in a lift or if we don't want to go further or you don't want us to go further. But if we can go to 70% and, and have that acknowledged two-car deficit, that's, that would be acceptable to us, that would save us from having to build a lift.
Yeah, again, I, I don't think anybody, including, I'm sure your client, wants to build that lift, right? So if it's not necessary.
If that's what you guys want to do.
What would the number be though? Let, let's say it's not 70%. Why do you get, how do you get al rate from that two-car deficit? 68%? 65?
Yeah, 65.
I mean, Tony, what, what would you, what would you say on that? I mean, then you just go there and you skip the lifts. If that's what the heartburn is on the commission.
I'd just have to run some numbers real quick and let you know.
Because we wouldn't want to do 70% because that leaves you the deficit and then that doesn't satisfy what we're, what we're here. The code says you have to have me this, you're at a deficit at 70, but if Tony's saying there's no deficit at 68 or whatever the percentage, then.
And that saves you.
Well, and then they don't need the modification because they only need the modification for the lift, correct?
Yeah, commissioners, you know, if, if you're uncomfortable with the, the lifts, then the simple solution would be to not approve the modification permit. And, and I think the concerns raised here tonight could potentially support that decision if that's what you wanted to do. And, and it, you're right, there is a, there is a spot where you don't have a, a parking deficit. And in essence, you could, you could deny the conditional use permit for the parking waiver and the applicant would be free to go ahead and, and convert the building up to that limit, wherever that limit is. I think it's about 68% or something like that. The one thing that they probably still would need to do is the parking stu, I'm sorry, the traffic study that's here before us tonight. I, I do believe even at 68% of the building, you probably need, still need the traffic study approved and, you know, I'm comfortable with recommending 70% of the building even with a two-space parking waiver based on the parking demand information that's in the record tonight for 100% of the building. I mean, I think that could be supported here tonight with approval of the conditional use permit for a two-space waiver and eliminate the lifts. And, you know, I, I suppose at that point in time, the applicant could evaluate the parking and, and do empirical studies of the parking at that time at full, at 70% build out and could come back with an application later requesting the rest of the building.
Yeah.
Knowing that that's coming back to us, you know, I, and what I believe, you know, Commissioner Kettig's concerns are, I, you know, a, a two-space deficit doesn't worry me as much knowing that they're coming back to do that request and it kind of puts the lifts in the future if needed, so. Excuse me, if I could, staff, on page eight, the, you know, the, the graphics that's right in front of us here, how many stalls are there now? Not, I mean, once it's re-laid out for the new, you know, standards of the city.
I believe the existing parking is 154, it's in a non-compliant condition. And when, when it's restripped with, with the, it's 154.
Okay, but go ahead.
And we would be at 167 with lifts, so take out 17.
150.
150.
It'd be at 150. Physically on the ground, no lift, all right? And how many square feet, what percent of medical can they put in at that point, right now, at 150 stalls?
I, I don't have the, I don't have the number. I don't know, David, if you've run that?
Are you asking?
It's, it's 1, 200, so.
Are you asking based on the code?
Right.
Okay.
Based on the code. Five per thousand. It's late for math, but this will help.
Any other questions while they, they? Yeah.
Enigma. We're getting close?
How about this, well, city attorney, we can, we can go on a recess and keep the public comment session open and we'll come back.
Yes, absolutely.
So we'll take a 10-minute recess?
Five minutes.
Okay, well, I got the, oh, we're in five minutes, okay. So five-minute recess, so 8:45. So five-minute recess, so 8:45. But staff was going to come, turn my mic on. But staff was going to come back with kind of their numbers that they worked on a little bit.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Lowery, you know, in evaluating the numbers and looking at the math real quickly, we discovered, you know, basically if we eliminated the lifts, we'd have 150 spaces. You'd have to have a parking waiver in order to have any of the building go to medical. And so what we were previously discussing, maybe some percentage could without having the lifts, that wasn't, that was not, that was not accurate. So I think what we'd like to do is make a recommendation that, that, you know, if the commission is amenable, maybe to modify condition number 10 as we've discussed, or just simply put a 70% cap in it and maybe start with there, try to simplify this, if that's something the commission might want to consider.
So you're saying 70% cap that, that, no matter what, that they are done at 70%? There's no coming back to you for any type of review to go to get the additional 30%?
If that's what the commission feels is appropriate to approve the project tonight, that might be one way to go. The other option is to go with condition number 10 and maybe modify it the way that you had suggested. That might be the other option. You know, we feel that there are sufficient facts to support the project as recommended. You know, maybe we can fine tune the conditions, but if the commission is concerned, you know, then maybe just do a 70% cap. Now, once we get to that point, and if, if the applicant can demonstrate that there isn't a parking problem, then they could come back and amend this permit and seek additional authorization later for the rest of the building, and that option would always be open.
So the applicant kind of has two pathways here. No lifts capped at 70% or lifts.
With lifts capped at 70%.
But 70%, they can have an opportunity to come back and look at review and as proposed is the one pathway. The other pathway is no lifts, you're locked and capped at 70%. You can't come back to the discussion again to, you have, the 30% has to be office, not medical going forward.
So if you're looking at having zero, no lifts at all, we're going to have 150 space parking lot, and there would be a parking waiver there.
Of two spaces.
It would be more, it would be more than that. I don't know the precise number, and I apologize. I think we, we've been running the numbers here and doing this on the fly is a little bit dangerous, so I'm a little concerned about even recommending and deciding what these numbers are. But, you know, staff has been comfortable with 100% of the building going forward without lifts, you know, based on the parking information that we have. Obviously, the commission is concerned and isn't sharing our confidence in that information, and the applicant has come back with lifts to increase the supply. It still doesn't meet our code, you know, and, and we still felt the 70% check-in was a reasonable way to go. You know, if the commission is concerned, and still is concerned, you know, my thought is, is, you know, it would be better to have the lifts in the project and then just cap it at 70% and, and the applicant can come back later and, and prove that there isn't a parking problem. That's the concern. Now, if the lifts are the problem and, and the commission is not willing to approve the modification permit, no lifts, then I think it would be prudent for us to reduce the amount of medical in the building, and 70% should work just fine. You know, again, our initial recommendation for this project was to approve 100% of the project without lifts based on the parking demand analysis. So I think the parking demand analysis would still support the project at 150 space surface parking lot with 70% medical.
And you're referring to when we first heard this, the last time you were supportive, and then we had this discussions brought back till tonight, and then now we're kind of having some internal discussions.
Exactly. So that is a, that is a separate option. And, and you might think of it just, you know, look at the, look at the lifts. If the lift, if you're uncomfortable with the lifts, is a consensus of the body, then, then do not approve the lifts. You know, you know, we, having a 70% limitation on medical in the building is another protection that would help potentially alleviate parking concerns. And then the applicant could proceed forward with the project, go to 70%, and they could come back at a future date, do an amendment to this if indeed the parking problem, a parking problem doesn't materialize.
And I guess the chair would be tasked with.
Just to remind all Commissioners that we're still at public hearing, so if there's really more questions here or staff, or if there's any more, none, so.
I'm just curious what the applicant would agree, would agree to that 70% cap then.
That would be acceptable to us.
But which would you prefer? Because the question, right?
Well, I, that's a good question.
Rather front the money for the lifts and, you know, take a gamble and.
Well, if we have, if we have to hit 70%, and if, if our, if our cap is 70% to either go forward and, and at that point, build the lifts, or to go forward because we already have the lifts, obviously, we would rather go to 70% without the lifts.
And then come back.
And then come back and say.
For an amendment or a.
And say either A, we, under the parking study, we're still under, underparked, or if we drop these lifts in, now we can get to a new number. So, yeah, I mean.
Just a question for staff then. I think if we did 70%, we can't do that without the lifts, without a parking waiver. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and it's not two, it's more spaces than just two.
It would be more than that. But again, you know, we do feel we've got the, the studies to show that the parking demand should be below what's provided, so we feel that that recommendation would be acceptable.
So why is it that we can't calculate what percentage of the building would be compliant at 150 spaces?
At this point, the building is deficient even at, you know, you need the lifts to get to the required parking for general office.
Because it's non-conforming as it sits today.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And so at that point, any of the building going to medical would require a parking waiver.
There's no other question for the applicant, or if there's no other further public comments for anyone else in the audience, Mr. White?
Jim White, owner of 1401 Quail Street. There's a lot of numbers swirling around. My understanding is that with, with the lifts, there's a deficit at 70%. If you remove the lifts, the deficit is more than obviously with the lifts. My, I, looking at it another way, whatever, I'm concerned that if 70% is approved and there's a parking problem, what do I do? We can't go backwards. So I guess I'm more in favor of reducing, having the lifts and reducing the percentage because my fear is, is we have the lifts and the 70%, and there becomes a parking problem at that point in time. It's already approved, and where do we go from there? I think the fact that there are so many numbers swirling around, it's, and it's critical that the correct numbers are discussed, that there needs to be appropriate time allowed. Clearly, it doesn't feel like there's time allowed or available tonight to do those numbers. I think the parties should go back and look at the numbers and find out exactly what the real numbers are instead of the various numbers that are flying around. I feel like it's very unstable and uncertain, excuse me, uncertain as to what the true numbers are. I've heard various, observing various methodologies and various numbers calculated, there's too much uncertainty for my comfort, and I'm concerned if 70% is approved and it becomes problematic, we can't go backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. See no other public comments? We'll go ahead and close the public comments section and any discussions from all those numbers before. Mr. Kitting?
I think we're almost there, but maybe we should continue this until that staff, staff and the applicant can do the math, and let's see what the deficiency is.
Right.
I mean, at, at 167, there, there's a deficiency.
Right.
Even if you're doing pure office, it's, the medical is pushing this thing to the stratosphere. So I think that in the long run, the medical's going to have to go down below 70 to make this thing balance, hopefully, that's so the neighborhood doesn't get impacted. And I think there should be some options in here. Jim, at, at 150 stalls, it's 25 cars short at pure, at five per thousand. Not hard.
Yeah, you're not far off on the number there. My preliminary calc might suggest the waiver would be 27 spaces at 70% medical.
There's that random too. So I'm going to make a recommendation, we continue this to the next meeting so we can get this thing done right.
Why don't you make a motion?
Pardon? Yeah, I just did, I made a motion for continuation.
Well, I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Can I ask a point of clarification? So could we, could, would this body feel comfortable lowering the threshold to just say 60% and then just get it going? I mean, I, I, you know, I, I, look, I understand what you're saying, too, about, you know, giving enough time, but if there is some type of deficiency, maybe we just lower it to 60% and move forward. I mean, we're, we're all, we're all but there just a few moments ago on this whole proposal with the modifications to everything. So, I mean, if the 70% is the heartburn, we'll just take, shave 10% off, and when they hit 10%, 60%, then they got to come to the staff and have that discussion. So I, I don't know if continuing is really going to solve much more when we're discussing just small percentages. I don't know, Tony, if you want to chime in on this.
I was just going to say that even if you went 50%, 50%, it, it still wouldn't park without the lifts. I mean, if we're trying to get it down to where you're using the surface lot, you're not using any lifts, and you don't want a variance, it's not, it's just not going to work without the lifts on the site. So, and that's with, by code. That's parking it per code. Obviously, if you're, you're parking it the way the study calculated it, then you could go right back to what was, we've been talking about, which is the 70, 30, do a study when you get to 70. But if you're going to park this thing per code, you, you can't do it on, it's right about on the number with the 17-space lift without a variance.
And that's kind of why I think we're, we're pretty much here tonight. Continuing, I don't think it's going to do, do too much for us.
I, in my opinion, I think the continuation gives everybody a chance to go back to the drawing board. I think everyone sees where this commission is wavering on this, and it gives both parties an opportunity to fine tune.
I mean, there's a motion in a second, so we'll.
One other point of clarification for the attorney. Can we, can we ask the applicant, you know, what, what his thoughts are on, I mean, it could be a moot point, but.
The motion's already called, so.
My apologies, I'm in a Google Earth view here.
The motion carries for two with Chair Lowery and Commissioner Wyken voting no.
Chair, Chair Lowery, if I might ask a question. The motion was to continue to the next meeting. Okay, so we have no items on the next agenda, so typically, we would cancel the next meeting and it would go to the October meeting. And so I guess I want to clarify that, what that motion really is. Are we having a hearing on the 23rd then?
I think, if I may, a simple solution is the next meeting, and we would just adjourn this meeting to the October meeting, and that way that resolves that.
Okay, that'll be fine.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. Back to my agenda here. Let's see, it's our study session actually, for item number four, which is code update related to accessory dwelling units, PA 2021-113.
Chair Lowery, I'll go ahead and do some introductory remarks while Jaime gets ready. You know, the, the city has been working to implement accessory dwelling unit regulations consistent with state law, which has been kind of a difference in how the city's been regulated these, these in the past. You know, the city council and the, the public and the staff has been working diligently on our housing element update, and we've got, one of our strategies in the housing element is really to, to utilize accessory dwelling units in a significant way to produce housing production in the community. And the city council is very supportive of finding ways to incentivize and, and increase the production of accessory dwelling units. So that's really the reason why we're here tonight, is that we are looking for ways to modify our accessory dwelling unit regulations to incentivize them. It's a very complicated topic, and I know it's very late in the evening already, so this is going to be a kind of a dense, difficult topic. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Jaime to kind of get started on this, but I also wanted to let everyone know that, you know, we've been discussing internally the prospects of maybe doing a, a ad hoc committee of the city, of the planning commission to maybe kind of dig into the regulations with staff, as it is very, very dense. And we wanted to offer that to you tonight, if that's something that you want to do, and that we can bring this back at a later point. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jaime and ask that he do his, do his best to be brief, but this is a fairly dense topic, and we're obviously here to help you.
Yes, good evening, Chair Lowery, members of the commission, and thank you. Jim, I think those introductory comments, I was going to make similar comments. This is a complicated matter. I do have a number of slides, so I'll do my best to go through them quickly, but at any time if, you know, you want to interrupt me for clarification, please do so. But generally, I just want to provide a quick overview and status of where we're at with development of accessory dwelling units as far as construction to date, the change in direction that the city is looking to move forward with in addressing our housing needs. I do have a number of questions that we are going to request feedback from the commission at the end of my presentation. But just really quick refresher on what an accessory dwelling unit is. And so there's two types. We use the term JADU and ADU. JADU is a junior accessory dwelling unit, and these are only allowed in conjunction with a single-family residence. But the, the key difference here is these are really looked at as an extension of the main home. Under the building code, they're, they're treated as part of the main home. They're limited in size to be very small, no more than 500 square feet. The property owner must live in either the primary unit or the JADU. And something that's unique about it is that the JADU can actually share a bathroom with the main home and have internal access. So it's a little unique, and it's essentially like a studio. Whereas a regular ADU, it's a full-blown separate unit under the building code, and it is required to comply with the separate fire rating and building code requirements. They're allowed in residential zones as well as mixed-use zones. We do have, they're allowed to be a little larger, so 850 square feet for one bedrooms and 1,000 square feet for two bedrooms. The exception to that is when they're converted from existing living space, they're unregulated in size, so they can be much larger. And with ADUs, there's various configurations. They can be converted from existing space, they can be in addition to a main home, or they can be constructed detached, separate from the main house, so. Something else I just want to point out that's unique about ADUs is they're subject to much relaxed parking standards. So for a JADU, there's no additional parking required. For an ADU, the city can require one parking space, and that doesn't have to be in a garage, it can even just be in a driveway. And that one space can even be waived in certain scenarios, and how it affects the city here is if an ADU is located within a half-mile walking distance to a bus stop, there's no additional parking. Or if the ADU is created from existing space, then there's no parking required either. And as I mentioned, there's different configurations of ADUs, and as far as when you, someone wants to build an ADU in conjunction with a single-family residence, there's a lot of more flexibility in options that a property owner has. And so if you look at these slides, I don't want to go into the weeds with the different standards, but essentially, you can convert existing living space or non-living space within a single-family home into an ADU. Again, you can attach it to the main house, you can create a detached ADU, or you can build an ADU above. So there's lots of different options, and what we've found is developers and proprietors, our existing regs tend to, to allow for development. But with multi-family developments, and when we say multi-family, we're talking about a project of two units or more. So that could be a duplex, or it can be a 100-unit apartment building. Those are all classified as multi-unit. But state law only requires the city to permit ADUs in two scenarios with multi-unit developments. And so those are kind of shown on this slide here. They're only allowed in conjunction with existing developments. So if you have an existing duplex, for example, you can convert existing non-living space, and that's a key term here. You can only convert a garage or an attic or something that's not currently used as livable space. livable space. If someone wants to build a brand-new ADU, they can only do it as a detached configuration, and again, it can only be added to an existing multi-unit development. So it's very limiting, and that's what our, our code allows for. I did want to share just quickly two examples of ADUs that have been constructed in the city. They're primarily have been done with single-family homes, so this is an example of a property on Irvine Avenue, where they incorporated the ADU on the second floor of a brand-new single-family home. As you can see from the street, you can't really tell, it's a separate unit, it just looks like it's part of the main house, and the ADU is area shaded in yellow. This is an example of another property on Aliso. This was constructed as a detached ADU above a new garage, and so this is separate from the main house, and it is visible from the alley here in that slide below, in that picture below. Both of these examples are compliant with parking. And quickly, just to go back to, you know, where we started with our ADU regulations prior to 2019, the city did not allow for second units at all within a single-family development. And then to address the housing crisis, the state adopted major changes in housing law starting in 2019, and then again in 2020. That really stripped the ability of the, the cities to regulate ADUs, and we had to permit them under certain scenarios. And so, you know, there was a lot of fear at the time with, with these new regulations that there would be a proliferation of ADUs throughout the city. And so the direction we received, you know, from the community and the planning commission and the city council was to, you know, comply with state law, but be as restrictive as possible. But what we've found since 2018 is there hasn't been a, a major proliferation of ADUs. The community has been slow to, to adapt to ADUs. As you can see on the table on the bottom, there have been, has been a, you know, a year to year increase in ADUs as people learn more about it, as our regulations have been a little bit more relaxed. We're still only trending about 25 ADUs per year. And so we currently have 85 ADUs in the different stages of development, either constructed, permitted, or under review. There's a little map showing the distribution of ADUs throughout the city. And then this slide, you can see on the right, we've kind of broken down the ADUs by neighborhood. This is a dashboard and a website that's going to be available to the public, we're just still making some tweaks, but over time you'll be able to see where the different ADUs are being constructed throughout the city. But one thing you'll notice, the Mariners' Dover Shores area has a high percentage or high number, and it's kind of an anomaly because the former, well, the apartment complex on 15th and Irvine formerly called Coronado, I forget the name now, but it's a large apartment complex, they took advantage of the ability to convert existing non-living space within that large apartment complex, and they've secured permits to construct 30 ADUs. So 30 ADUs are within that larger apartment complex, so the numbers are a little deceiving. But beside Mariners' area, you'll see Santa Ana Heights, Newport Heights, and Coronamar and Babo Island have kind of the next highest level of ADU development. Of the most popular types is ADU conversion, so that's converting existing space, that's what we're seeing the most of. After that, it would be detached ADUs. But what's changed, though, as you know, within the last two years, the, the state has been working on the new regional housing determination, and so this is essentially the state mandate that the city has to address in terms of planning for new housing for the next eight-year planning cycle. And so the city's been working hard to work on a new updated draft housing element to, you know, determine where is the best location and how to best plan for our RENA requirement, that's the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, of approximately 4,800 units. And so what we found is, we don't really have any vacant land, so we're having to focus on potentially rezoning existing underutilized land for higher-density infill development. But what we heard from the community and the planning commission and the city council is, you know, perhaps ADUs are an important strategy to that. So ADUs are an alternative to rezoning to meet our RENA, and so the city council in the draft housing element has set forth a pretty aggressive target of 1,000 ADUs to be planned for in the next eight-year planning cycle, and so that's about 125 a year. So we have a lot of catching up to do. The city council did adopt Council Policy K4, which was intended to reduce the barriers to development of housing in the city, and a major component of that was to help promote ADU development, and it provided direction to the city staff and the planning commission to work together to amend our code, to try to, you know, reduce the barriers and provide more permissive regulations. They've also directed us to adopt and prepare an amnesty program. What we heard is, you know, there's hundreds of unpermitted units out in the city, in particular Babo Island, Coronamar and the peninsula, that if we can get them to come in, permit their units, make them safe, we can actually get RENA credit for those, and so that's part of this program. Another part of the program is to, you know, step up our, our public outreach and create pre-approved plans that property owners can use. That would reduce the time and cost for a property owner to develop ADUs, and so these are things we're currently working on. But as it relates to our study session, it's really focusing on what changes can we make to our existing regulations to help promote further ADU development. And so as we go through, we have a number of questions, so it's not all the questions that are in your staff report, but truly the nine main questions that relate to development standards. And so they're really focused on three different areas. So the first topic is, you know, how do we expand opportunities for ADU construction and multi-unit developments? And I'll go through each of these questions with an example, and then I'll come back at the end with our recommendation and then seek planning commission feedback. The second topic area is providing additional incentives for ADU development that may include larger ADUs or additional floor area, or opportunities to add ADUs without taking away from the floor allowances of the main property. And then the last topic here is, you know, looking at maybe further reducing, reducing the parking requirements. So the first question related to expanding opportunities for ADU construction in multi-unit dwelling development. So as I mentioned, our existing regulations are really limited, and you can only do it in conjunction with an existing multi-unit development. And, but we've received a number of requests from different property owners and developers wanting to add ADUs to existing development in different forms. And so the little sketch on the, the top right there, you know, this would be an example of if someone has an existing duplex and they still have room to add an ADU, and this is common in Newport Shores where there's two units with like a one-story garage. Are we okay with someone adding brand-new square footage as an ADU addition to an existing duplex or larger multi-unit development? The picture on the bottom, this would be an example of if somebody wanted to convert existing living space. And this one's really critical to a successful amnesty program, we believe. And so what we found in our code enforcement is, you know, we have found duplexes where a property owner has further subdivided on a larger, a larger unit, such as taking a master bedroom and turning that into a third unit. And so if we can allow for the conversion of living space into an ADU, that would help with its amnesty program. Second question is, do we want to allow ADUs as part of a new development? So we receive a lot of requests and inquiries at the counter, someone wanting to build a brand-new duplex and add an ADU to it to get a, a total of three units, and so currently that's not allowed. And then the consideration would be, do we want to allow these new ADUs as part of any multi-unit development, or do we want it limited to smaller projects, such as maybe only a duplex or a triplex? And I did want to just bring up a new issue that we're finding, and it's related to a different state law that was adopted, which is called SB 330, or the Housing Crisis Act. It's a complicated law, but there's a component of that law that prevents the loss of density as part of any new housing development project. And that has caused a lot of trouble for property owners, because over time the city has downzoned blocks throughout the city. And so here's two examples of properties that we're currently dealing with property owners on, where they're, they're feeling kind of stuck between state law and what the city regs want them to do. So you can see the property at 1509 West Balboa, that's a three-unit, single-level apartment building that was legally constructed at the time, but under the current regulations, it's zoned R2, meaning you can only rebuild that property with two units. And so our code is really intended to force people to build and redevelop with a compliant two-unit project, but now with SB 330, they're stuck. They can't tear it down because our code doesn't let them build back three units. And so a solution here would be to allow the construction of a duplex with a new ADU, netting in that third unit and allowing redevelopment on this property. And the property below at Fernleaf, this is a different example where a property owner's having a hard time, where there's currently five units located on two lots. Each lot is zoned R2, so under our code, they can only build back two duplexes, netting in four units, which would be in violation of SB 330. So if there was an ability to build an ADU in conjunction with a new duplex, then they would have the ability to redevelop this project, property. Fourth question we have is, should we allow exterior access to subterranean basements to accommodate an ADU? And so under our current rules, if somebody wants to build a subterranean basement, it doesn't count against their allowable floor area. And the rationale behind that is if the basement's completely surrounded by dirt, nobody sees it, there's really no harm, no foul in terms of that square footage. But as soon as you add exterior access, you now see that basement, and that redefines the basement to what we call daylighting basement. Daylighting basements do count against your allowable floor area. And so the idea here is maybe we do want to allow for a very small, limited exterior access to a subterranean basement that is housing an ADU. Because overall, it'll be very hard to tell there's a basement as long as that access is limited. And we believe that would be a big incentive to developers building new homes or duplexes to include that extra unit. The fifth question has to do with, should we allow additional floor area for new developments that include ADUs? This one's a little confusing, but there is a, a state law requirement that says the city cannot prevent, I'm sorry, the city cannot apply a floor limit or a coverage limit or open space requirement that prevents the construction of an 800-square-foot ADU that's no more than 16 feet in height. So the way we've interpreted that is if you have an existing development, and the example here shows if, let's say you have a, an existing single-family house that's completely built out, there's no more square footage left, if somebody wants to come in and build an ADU, we have to permit at least an 800-square-foot ADU, no more than 16 feet tall. Our interpretation of that's been if somebody wants to build a brand-new home, there's no constraint to fit in that ADU, and so we've told people they have to include that 800 square, I'm sorry, they have to include the, the new ADU as part of their overall floor area allowance. We've had property owners say, you know, that's not fair, why does someone with existing development get to benefit from that 800 square feet? But if I'm building a brand-new development, why shouldn't I get that extra 800 square feet? And so I think it's a fair question, but there is a concern about increasing the bulk and mass of new buildings. The sixth question has to do with, should we remove a specialized requirement that states that only, and this only applies to an ADU that's attached to the main house? So normally, a brand-new ADU, as I mentioned earlier, can be 850 square feet for a one-bedroom or 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom. But if it's attached to the main house, there's a third limitation that applies that says it can't be more than 50% of the size of the main home. And so it's kind of a, it's a unique circumstance, it only applies in, in one case. I don't know if it does too much, but it does help reduce the size and maintain an appearance that's more subordinate to the main home. But by removing that, it does simplify our code and remove an additional constraint. The seventh question has to do with, do we want to consider different ADU standards for different parts of town? So I think the idea was in Coronamar, where properties are more constrained, can we require a, a smaller ADU size, but in areas where the lots are larger and there's more on-street parking, maybe allow for larger ADU sizes? And so that is an idea, one thing to consider is, we cannot restrict the unit sizes any smaller than what our current code allows, but we can allow for larger. And so an idea here would be to maintain the base ADU size limits for one bedrooms and two bedrooms, but maybe allow for an increase in those unit sizes equal to a factor of 20% of the lot size, you know, up to a certain number, and maybe that's 2,000 square feet. And so on the bottom of the slide, you see some examples, a smaller lot in maybe Coronamar, the maximum unit size would be 850. But if you're in Dover Shores, you can get up to a 2,000-square-foot ADU. So that's one way to maybe allow for larger ADUs where the lots are larger and there's more parking. This eighth question has to do with parking, and so there is one unique thing about ADUs and parking is that state law says that if somebody wants to convert their garage or their carport into an ADU, we have to permit that, and the city cannot require replacement parking. There is one exception to that, is within the coastal zone, if we can make a finding that we need replacement parking to maintain parking for public access, we can require it. So our current version of our ADU ordinance does require replacement parking within the coastal zone. The coastal commission still has not weighed in on this part of our ordinance, but this is maybe something that we can back off on, to allow for garage conversions without replacement parking in the coastal zone. There has been interest from investors looking to buy duplexes near the coast and convert the garages into a third ADU. And this is the last question. This has to do with maybe rethinking our incentive for height. So typically, a detached ADU is limited in height to 16 feet tall maximum. In our current ordinance, we created incentive that says a detached ADU can actually be taller, it can go up to the, the base height limit of 29 feet, provided it's built over a garage, and that the entire development, which would include, let's say, the, the main single-family home, is fully code-compliant. So this is really incentive created to help ensure we, we do maintain adequate onsite parking. But we found in some cases that this requirement actually deters providing some level of parking. So if you're not able to provide a fully compliant parking development, someone in this example would just build a detached ADU, have no parking spaces. So it might be better to have some parking. So that's one idea to, to remove some constraints. So I'm just going to do a quick recap, kind of advise you of what staff's recommendations would be, and then after then, at the end of the, these slides, we'd be looking for planning commission's input and public, input from the public. So with that first question, we do believe we should allow for ADU additions and the conversions of living space as part of a, an existing multi-unit development. It's definitely going to spur development, and it is going to help legalize and help us create an amnesty program to legalize those illegal units. With that second question, we also do believe that we should allow the construction of an ADU as part of a new development, as it does help with those properties that are stuck in that SB 330 trap, but will also spur new development. But staff believes we should limit it only to smaller developments, so I think in our opinion, we should allow ADUs as part of maybe a duplex or a triplex, but multi-unit developments any larger than that should be subject to the standard code, and we should only allow no more than one ADU in, in these examples. The question related to basements, you know, we believe that this would be a good idea if we can limit the exterior access, if it still maintains the overall mass that is permitted by code, you know, above grade. With question five, and the idea of allowing an 800-square-foot bonus for new developments, staff believes that we should not. Again, you know, the idea here is not to change setbacks or allow for increased height or increased bulk. What we think we should do is, you know, little tweaks that allow for more development, but that can still control the, the overall bulk and mass of these properties and to maintain the community character, so we would recommend against this one. In terms of question six, and eliminating that 50% size requirement for attached ADUs, we think that's pretty minor, but it helps simplify our code, which is already pretty complicated. Question seven, should we allow larger units in areas with larger lot sizes? Question seven, should we allow larger units in areas with larger lot sizes? You know, I think we can, and we can definitely write the code to do so, but it just adds another complication to an already complicated code. In terms of question eight, in eliminating that replacement parking for garage conversions in the coastal zone, I think we'd want to be careful here. You know, we're currently requiring replacement parking coastal zone-wide, but there's a lot of areas in the coastal zone that aren't really used or parking impacted for public access. So we may want to modify that standard to apply only in those areas that are more parking-impacted and used for public access. I saw that the Coastal Commission recently changed the City of Santa Cruz to a 500-foot distance, and so that might be something that works well here. And then that last question is, should we allow for increased height of ADU above a garage if the main home is not parking compliant? Again, staff is recommending that yes. It would still encourage providing some level of parking if it's over a garage, and some level of parking onsite is better than no parking. So, sorry if that was a little long. So that concludes my presentation. So we are seeking feedback from the planning commission, and then, as Jim mentioned, what we'll do is take your feedback, start working on code revisions, and we can come back to a future study session, or if the commission likes, because I know this is super detailed and complicated, maybe we can form an ad hoc committee and work more closely on suggested revisions. And then we'll bring it all back to a future public meeting. But that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. A lot of information there. Any questions with staff on the study session here?
How do they define constrained developments, item five?
So what it says is, we can't apply our floor area limits or coverage. So the code and law doesn't actually say constrain, it just says the city can't apply those standards if it precludes the development of an 800-square-foot ADU. And so if a property's already maxed out, there's no floor area left to build, we still have to allow for that 800-square-foot ADU, as long as it meets a certain provisions, like 16 feet tall and four-foot setbacks. And so what we've said is, and how we've interpreted law, is the property has to already be constrained to take advantage of that. If someone's building brand-new, or they have floor area, they shouldn't automatically get that 800-square-foot bonus. And so it's really interpretation of the law on our end.
Commissioner Rosin?
I think this is all great, and I really appreciate what you've done here. It's, there's a lot to digest here, and I wanted to just take a quick step back to this concept of the ad hoc committee, because there's a law of unintended consequences with us maybe just saying, well, we'll do this, and we'll pick that. The ad hoc committee might be able to pick the minds of the architects who are out there that know how to adjust and work within the code. I'm constantly amazed by what I've seen with how we might be able to benefit from the code changes, and also where I'd be concerned about unintended consequences. I mean, really, there's some interesting things about that, that I like the idea of the ad hoc committee. I think we should invite some people that are the ones that we would bring to the table when we're designing a community, and look at what the consequences of some of this would be. And I could cite the examples all day long right now, but I'd just instead would rather say that this concept of some of these questions and us responding, I think it's a great idea. I would also recommend that we do an ad hoc committee, invite those kinds of people, and show us how those things, how our decisions will impact our community.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, we'll, got a question?
How long do we have to, you know, get this going? I mean, obviously, we've got a deadline from the state that says we have to build this many, you know, X amount of units. Seeing that there's that graph that you showed us, that we really haven't built that many, so, you know, the state's going to come back when we give a proposal. If we said we wanted, you know, 1,000 ADUs, you know, we have a history of the last five years that show we've built a very small amount. How do we, how do we get them to buy into this? Obviously, we have to have a committee that kind of studies what, as Commissioner Rosin said, unintended consequences, because, you know, when I was, when you were going through these, I thought you were recommending all these things, and I'm looking at a couple of the ones, and eventually, the slide said, "No." I'm like, "Okay, I can settle down a little bit," because you agreed to kind of some of the stuff that I was, I was seeing too. But, you know, how much time do we have on this? Like, if we formed an ad hoc committee, how long is it going to take to get the answers that we need to get answered, based on all these unique villages, communities that we have? And you've highlighted all of them that have tried to put ADUs in, but each one of them is uniquely different and uniquely qualified for certain parts of what this is, but not all parts. So I think it's a very complicated issue. I want to make sure the public is aware of this, because, you know, this is a late-night meeting, there's only a couple members of the public. When you read the staff report, do you really know that that's what we were going to discuss tonight? You start asking questions, and I think that people would get concerned if they saw some of this stuff pop up right next to their house. So I do agree with Commissioner Rosin on that. I have some more specific questions to it, but I'm not sure if that's relevant, if we need to just sit here tonight and say, "Let's form this ad hoc committee that really discusses the weeds and the ramifications of each one of these proposals," because there is a significant amount. And I don't think that this body at this hour is qualified to really do the people's work that's required of this particular item. So I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing tonight that's best for the residents.
Yeah, I think that's kind of the sentiment here. Maybe we'll go with public comments right now, and then we'll kind of come back to that. All right. We'll go ahead and open for public comments.
Hi, my name's Nancy Scarborough. Thank you for being here. This is really, really a late hour, a lot to digest, and I'm being told that we're three and a half hours past happy hour, so I'll make my comments short. I was going to do this, now I'm going to do this. Thank you so much, Commissioner Wigan and Commissioner Rosin, for promoting the idea of an ad hoc committee. I think that that is the only way to deal with this. There are so many aspects to this. I follow this closely. I am very much in favor of ADUs. I fought hard to get 1,000 ADUs in our draft housing element, and I support ADUs completely. However, these questions are being asked tonight, and the laws that have been approved and are in the process of being approved are going to affect all of this, and this really needs to be torn apart and just put back together in a reasonable way. We have several years to build these ADUs, they're not necessarily, they don't have to be done next year. We have lots and lots of ADUs that we might be able to identify that could just have minor modifications. So it's not an impossible task, but I would highly recommend, and if I were asked to vote on this myself, I would want to take the time to really study this. And this is the first I've seen of all this. It's great staff work, I'm so glad that we're being inventive here, but this needs a lot of public awareness, or we'll have a revolt. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Chair Lowry, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I have two comments. First of all, if you are tending towards appointing an ad hoc committee, I would hope that that ad hoc committee would choose to advertise and invite the public to at least some of its meetings, so that the final decision is not something that just comes fully baked for the entire commission here to approve, and so the public can see what is in progress before the final result is presented. If your committee is small enough, you're not required to notice your meetings, but a few of them, I think, should be. Second comment, slide nine, this table, I really don't understand at all. We've been told, it says something trending 25 per year, and we need to get up to 125. It actually, on the last line here, it's showing something that's tripling every year. And in the total at the bottom, this year, we're up to 55, so, I mean, we'd be up to 150 next year if it's tripling every year. But I don't understand the total at the bottom, because it's, permits here, final, permitted, applied, does the same permit appear several times? Does it appear three times? I don't understand why we're, it makes, the total line at the bottom makes no sense to me, and the trend line, I'm not sure what the 25 per year, is that referring to one of the rows? What? It makes no sense at all to me. Maybe it's just because I'm sleepy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. First, thanks, Jim and Jaime. They know how strongly I feel about this, and I can't echo the comments from Nancy Scarborough and the two commissioners regarding a need for an ad hoc committee that ideally has public participation with experts. We started following the general plan update when then-Mayor Diane Dixon appointed the first committee. We've been to every meeting and done a great deal to learn about it, and as Nancy mentioned, we were the ones that pushed to increase the quantity to 1,000. So we want to see that work, and there are some great ideas that have been offered here tonight, but like you, we just saw them for the first time, and we think they need further thought, not to tear them apart, but to help amplify them so that they can work. And there are places that these don't work well in, and there are places where they do. You saw on the chart that, except for Coronado, which is an anomaly, that Newport Heights, where we live, has the greatest amount of them. And frankly, there have been granny flats over the garages legally for years that blend in just fine. Conversely, there are folks in Coronado Del Mar that are trying to trick this system into turning it into a duplex or a quad units to take advantage of, and we don't think that that's right. So there's things to be done here that the committee can do to help fine-tune this, and I don't see the interest on the part of the council to do that work, unfortunately, and I think you're a perfect body to do it, and I'm happy to help participate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, I don't think we have any more public comments, since we've got the full public, so that's good. So we'll go ahead and close the public meeting here. And I kind of echo, I agree, an ad hoc committee would be great for this, and, yeah, I guess up to the, to the commission here, or at least with, you know, also city attorney on how that, how we would form that and what that would look like.
I can offer suggestions.
Yes, suggestions of how that would look.
Our rules of procedure do allow the chair to make appointments to committees from time to time, so one thought would be that we could go ahead and have the chair, again, it is late, so we could have the chair make some appointments, and we could kind of set up a little bit more comprehensive process, just in terms of public input and so forth, and provide that as a receive-and-file perhaps at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, is it, is it a committee that would only be planning commissioners? Or would it be open to others or other input in terms of people? I think echoing what Commissioner Rosin said, that people that might have a little bit more of specific skill sets, say such as an architect or someone like that, that could help along in some of the things that the public has spoke about as well.
Yes, so the committee itself would be comprised of members of the planning commission. However, you know, inviting members of the community, professionals and so forth, to provide input, that would certainly be part, could be part of the...
Yeah, it's very important just to people that have, since this is relatively new, to have, has a lot, updated skill set would be great to be able to listen to. Okay, so.
Can this be directed back to the city council for them to make a decision of have two council members, two planning commissioners, two members of the public, and perhaps, you know, I know there's seven seats here, but it doesn't have to be seven, but, you know, add some developers and some, you know, architects or, you know, to that committee that are residents of the city. Look, I think you're all uniquely qualified to be up here, but I think there's more to this, and this is a very comprehensive thing that the city has a choice with. And I don't, I don't take away from commissioners, but I want to make sure that the best body is selected in this process, and it's a very huge component of the city moving forward. So I'm more comfortable having the council make the decisions on this, because they're the elected body that represents what the city's future is. And so if the council selects two people, that they, that from their body, then directs this body to either choose it ourselves, or to choose it themselves, and then have some members of the public, as well as some experts in the industry, that is my personal feel of how that process should go as far as ad hoc. I don't, I don't think this body should, should go that route, considering it's such a big issue for the city.
The city council, obviously, would, would make that decision if they would want to create an ad hoc committee that's a little bit more comprehensive. I think on the upcoming agenda, there are, at least this September, there are going to be at least two ad hoc committees that are being formed. This is the planning body that, you know, looks at and evaluates planning issues, so I think that was part of the thought process here. And then, of course, those would be just recommendations that would, you know, come forward just in terms of implementation. So, you know, nothing's etched in stone, and it's, there are options that are open, but I think the thought process was that with the committee, this is the planning, the planning body would be kind of the group that's, that's moving this along.
Because when you have a general plan committee that we'd never really quite got to, they would select, the council would select that body, correct? It would be council-driven, and they'd assign a couple of planning commissioners, or one, maybe one planning commissioner, and then to put that final project together.
It's been, it's been done in various forms. There has been a more comprehensive committee with just different members, and then there are also just ad hocs that are actually created, that are less the majority of the actual body. So there are different options and different ways in which they've been formed.
So we're just making recommendations tonight within ourselves for the, for the future of this discussion.
Chair Lowry, if I might add to the discussion here, I think staff would be interested in just creating an ad hoc committee of the commissioners, and I think when that meeting, when we start those meetings, we can decide as an ad hoc committee, you know, do we want to invite those professionals into the meeting? And I think that's a very good idea, to have those meetings. And if the committee chooses to have some meetings that are noticed in the public so that we can provide additional dialogue, that's fine as well. You know, staff would be interested in keeping it at that level, otherwise it becomes obviously a much different type of committee if the council appoints a body. It would otherwise potentially be a Brown Act committee, and it would take quite a bit longer. And back to Commissioner Wigan's question about timing, you know, I think going with a committee, an ad hoc committee of the council, I'm sorry, the planning commission, you know, I think we can, you know, meet several times, get, get everyone familiar with what we're thinking here, and then, you know, obviously, get additional information and input from the public. And we, in essence, we have enough time to come back with a recommendation, you know, toward the latter part of this year. I think our interest is to try to get something going here pretty quickly, because, again, we want to incentivize the construction of ADUs. We want to, the, we need to get moving on this, but I do think we have, we do have some time to do it here at a, at a planning commission ad hoc level.
I just, I just think it's a far greater issue than just what we're hearing. I'm not against what you're saying. I'd, can somebody just discuss it with, potentially, the mayor or the council, just to say, "We had this discussion tonight," to say that, you know, Commissioner Wigan thinks that we should at least include that, be this process, whereas staff is thinking times more of the essence, and this body is well-qualified to do that. I just want to have a counterargument that just doesn't get put in the backseat. I just, I think this is such an important issue, and it, it's, it could be way over our heads that it's important that the council has an opportunity to weigh in from the beginning on it, and assign who they think are the most qualified people for this, this project.
We could definitely have those discussions, and we can report back.
Yeah, my, I agree with, I'm a little bit more in with speed and to get it going, and let's, let's, let's look at it right now as a planning commission, and again, it's a, it's a ad hoc committee, we'll go, like Ms. Scarborough said, I'd definitely like to bring in people that are with staff's knowledge and other people that have the knowledge, bring that in, and let's put, let's put together some, some of those ideas, and the city council can always expand on that after we come with our recommendations. I mean, we're recommending it, we're not, we're not implementing, we're recommending it, and the city council goes like, "Hey, that's great work, but hey, let's, we have these other questions, or we want to make it larger. Let's do that then, but I would rather start the process now and get that going." And, you know.
That's a very good observation. You're absolutely right. We can start the process, and the council can expand it and include more at a later point, and we can have those conversations with the mayor or other council members and take it from there. But, you know, I think we start with, you know, let's say, a three-member ad hoc committee, and then we can have those discussions and go from there.
And to the city attorneys, and just we'll kind of come up with some names and just do, like you said, a receive-and-file on the consent calendar for, so the next meeting, is that kind of the appropriate action? See who's, kind of get some ideas of who's interested and can put in the extra time and... and formally vote on that at the next, is that the proper way to go forward?
As I mentioned, the rules do allow, they give the chair that discretion.
Oh, okay.
And so it would be, it would be within your discretion to just go ahead and make those appointments, and again, we would just, you know, obviously, bring it, let everybody know, and we probably want to flesh out some of these other additional details as part of that process.
We'll go ahead and do that, and we'll, we'll, I mean, not make that decision tonight, but...
That's correct.
Got it, we'll do it. Okay, great.
Quick questions. Staff, are we feeding this little by little to the state, or are we going to try to roll it up and say, here it is? And then they're going to dissect it and roll it back?
At the end of the day, whatever we do to change the ordinance, the state would be reviewing our ordinance, and so we wouldn't be piecemealing it up to them. But I think if we come back with a comprehensive package that the city council is appropriate, is appropriate to endorse, then we would share that with the state, and we could even get feedback before we adopt the ordinance, if that's what we choose to do. So, but again, it would be a comprehensive package to the state.
All right.
I might also add, you know, if we come up with some innovative ideas, we can definitely bounce them off of their staff. We do that all the time. Staff is in, Jaime is in constant contact, if you will, with HCD staff, to try to help us understand the regulations, what we can and can't do, and we can bring that information and share that knowledge to the ad hoc committee.
Sounds good. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on then to item, or section nine of the agenda, staff and commissioner items. Is there any motion for reconsideration? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. If Mr. Campbell has any updates from there.
Very briefly, I know the lateness of the hour here, and it is Commissioner Kettign's birthday, and I do want to get him out of here quickly. So I just wanted to note, we have a council meeting next week on the 14th, which is my birthday, and I will be actually at the council meeting. We have a study session on the inclusionary housing ordinance, again, with the city council. This will be our third study session on that particular topic. The council does have some interest in potentially moving forward with one, so we'll be doing that. We also have a public hearing on the possible extension of our emergency temporary use permits, you know, all the outdoor dining for the restaurants that you see around town that is, that was put in due to the COVID pandemic, and I believe the council may be willing to extend those through to the end of the year. We'll see, but that's also on the agenda. Last item I want to note is on September 23rd. We don't have any items for the planning commission, so we would counsel the 23rd meeting. And then back to that item earlier in the evening, we would bring that forward on October the 7th, where we have two other items, and so that would, that would be a reasonable agenda there. And with that, I'm done.
All right, sounds good. Any items that the commissioner would like to place on future agendas? Seeing none. Any requests for excused absences? None? Then let's adjourn at 9:50.
If I may, if I may just get a motion, since we are adjourning to the 7th, if I could just get a motion to adjourn and approved.
Commissioner Kettign, you're...
Make the motion.
Sure, okay. I guess we have...
Second.
Second, okay.
Excuse me, Yolanda? We're going back to item number three?
No.
We're just getting a motion to adjourn to October 7th, and so if you could just, it would be at X, essentially, or 10, Roman numeral 10.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.